Welcome to the 6:30, March 23, 2021, Tiesville City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda items must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you, Clerk. Counsel, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 11?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the special city council meeting on March 11, 2021.
I have a motion, and I have a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have no special recognitions or presentations. And staff would like to request that council move item 9A up to, right now.
Do I need a motion and a vote on that?
Yes, you do.
Do I have a motion to move 9A to the present?
You do.
Vice Mayor gives me the motion, and I have a second from Member Jordan. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion carries. 9A will begin at this time. City Manager?
Mayor, this is quasi-judicial, so I'd like to read the quasi-judicial proceedings. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained therein. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chambers. I know we have a staff and an applicant. Have all witnesses that intend to speak sign a note card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. Regarding the order of presentations, first, council will receive staff's presentation, followed by the presentation of the applicant. Following the applicant's presentation, the floor will be open to public comment. The applicant may then make a rebuttal. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, party, council, and staff representative as authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City Clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign a note card. If there's anyone present who has not signed a note card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City Clerk, of all agenda items been properly advertised. Regarding ex parte communications, in the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received an expert opinions regarding the quasi-judicial item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed. That would be appropriate to do at this time.
I'm not sure how you want to do this because most of us received at least 15 emails, so I'm disclosing that for sure. Do I have to tell?
Yes, I would suggest we take a council member at the time, and if any council member has had first communications with anybody, disclose the identity of the person or group who, with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including opinions or facts discussed. So yes, you'll need to name the individuals you spoke to. If you receive written communications, disclose where the communication came from and the opinions contained therein, and provide that as a part of the record. So yes, to answer your question, identify those documents and provide to the clerk as part of the record.
Mr. Brewin, since we all received the same communications, and they are public record, and they're numerous, so I don't think Mr. Jordan or any of it sat down and made out a list of each email, but they are public record, so can we just say we have received?
I believe staff has the emails that were provided. They certainly read those. Each member can advise if they have any communications separate from those, and you'll identify any communication separate from that and will be put into the record.
Right. Just for the record, I do have a list of them because I'm anal like that, but I would rather for, if Ms. Pesacca could just name the emails.
I'm just going to name the people. Rebecca Chapman, Stan Johnston, William Klein, William Klein, William Klein, Joe Peretti, Marla Brickell, Doug Rose, Bob Kay, Tony Shifalo, Lillian, and I apologize to Lillian Guzziak, Melissa Stahl, Jerome Sansom, David Bato, Sally Erner, Adam Locke, John Inga Britstein, I think I said that wrong, Billy Bosch, Deborah Day, Tom Abbott, Melissa Stahl, Kevin Rosa, Marcia Bania, Cheryl Abbott, William Klein, Joe Peretti, Stuart Umpus, Sidney Davis, William Klein, and Marla Brickell. I also want to note that these have all been provided to the applicant.
And are all those, have those been provided to the clerk?
Yes, the clerk actually is the one who gave these to me, this collection.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, some of the names that Ms. Pesacca called, I didn't get those emails, but I think we have them in our packet right now. Also, I'd like to say I did have phone calls from Rita Pritchett and Robin Fisher, along with an email from Mr. Pritchett.
Are you done? Is that it?
Yes, that's all I have.
Vice Mayor, you want to go?
Okay. In addition to the emails, I did speak to Rita Pritchett, Robin Fisher, Mary Ellen Donner, and the engineer, Mike, whose name I can't, last name I can't remember. McGreev, and Laura Lee Thompson. The substance of the conversations, some of them happened this last week, Wednesday and Thursday. Some of them happened, I think the conversation with Laura Lee was last week, last Thursday or Friday. It was basically Mr. Fisher talking about the referendum where the citizens talked about taxing themselves to redo the park. With Rita, it was, please talk to Mary Ellen and talk about the park, and we hope you'll support it. Mary Ellen and the engineer, Mike, went through the plans with me and showed me the things they thought were important. And Laura Lee told me, talked to me about things that she thought were important. I have not formed any opinion at this point, so I will listen and hopefully make a wise decision, along with the rest of us.
Member Robinson?
Yes, I received a phone call from Ms. Ward. It was a very short conversation, and we did not talk about the issues at hand.
Member Stokel?
In addition to the emails mentioned, there was a letter from U.S. Windsurfing Association. I saw an email from Stell Bailey. I also talked to Rita Pritchett, not about the variance, but mostly about what the condition of Parish Park is currently, plus the photos that we received. Also talked to Robin Fisher in regards to the referendum, as well as the email on the referendum, and that is all.
For myself, those emails sounded about right. I'm going to go back. I'm trying to think if I might have gotten one solo, so I'll go back and check, and if you all can check my emails, I'm good with that, too. I had a meeting with Laura Lee yesterday and, you know, listened to her and her concerns, et cetera, et cetera. Had a phone call with Member Pritchett, I'm saying Member too much, Rita Pritchett, and pretty much just talked about the meeting at Parks and Rec and kind of the history. Didn't really talk about the variance at all, but did speak with her, and like I said, I met with Laura Lee, and I think that's the only two people I met with.
When you, you mentioned Laura Lee, and what was the facts discussed, her opinions?
Her, you know, her concerns, she didn't like pavement, didn't like, and one time she had said that something needs to be done, but there's alternatives. We didn't have time to go into all the alternatives. Just kind of a discussion on the concerns. Maybe Laura Lee can help me. That's about right, isn't it?
Any opinions formed?
No. You know, you listen, and, you know, my opinion was she's got some concerns. So that, I mean, seriously, that's kind of worth the opinion you get. So outside of that, that was it.
Councilmember Stokel, you mentioned receiving a couple of emails. Could you talk about what was in the emails and provide them to the clerk for the record?
Yeah, everything's been provided to the clerk. The one from Robin Fisher was on the referendum back, and it is provided to the clerk already. I sent the email.
And you mentioned a windsurfer?
Yeah, that was in the public emails as well. I just don't think the name was mentioned. I just wanted to clarify.
Mayor, if I could take a second, I know it might take a little while, but I'll look at each of these and for the record, discuss the basis of what these emails say. Oh, somewhere. I just want to say, you know, again, for the record, this is from Rebecca Chapman. "I'm writing to ask you do everything in your power to stop the project at Parish Park moving forward as planned. I believe as a city official elected by the people, you're in a position to influence decision-makers on the project, which is harmful to the local economy." I'm going to read more for about, it's important that we talk about any facts set forth. "Believe that the project is economically harmful to ecotour companies in the process of obtaining the county permit, planning to operate from Parish Park as a launch point. Tourists love horseshoe crabs, dolphins, and anteas groves. Believe this will force ecotour companies to relocate." Again, I don't want to, I'm not trying to state everything that's in here, but I believe the applicant and others ought to hear the basis of the opinions in here, so if they want to address that, they certainly can. "I believe it's harmful, the project is harmful to ecologically sensitive areas. Indian River Lagoon is already suffering from devastating grass flats, habitat loss. It would put more stress on stressed ecosystems. Impact will not only the horseshoe crabs, but also waiting birds and other animals. You were elected by the people of Tiesville. You have a duty to put pressure on those in charge. Our leader is not appointed by the federal government. They were elected by the people of the community, grown weary watching the precious resource of the lagoon starve and suffocate. Project is bad for the economy, bad for ecosystem, bad for families. Please stand with us." This was from Rebecca Chapman. "You've received a correspondence from Stan Johnston, which is many, many pages, primarily regarding a meeting with Mr. Robinson in stormwater and issues of the city, which, again, I don't know if this was part of this package. I believe this was submitted as part of the meeting package. Mr. Klein. Provided drawing for Parish Park. Design will make it almost impossible to launch any windsurfers and kayaks on the beach. There should be at least six straight ramps with no right turn angles, whole length. Stairs for those who don't like ramps. I see this design as a great safety hazard prone to severe erosion. The drawings look like they were designed by someone who's ignorant of beaches and watercraft. They have no knowledge about wildlife and the environment. We must get major changes or stop the project." Discussing the ramps inside the parking lot. "There's only one straight stairway of five steps. The whole project looks like they want to eliminate windsurfers and kayaks from the park." Also contained in here is an email from Laura Lee. It's hard to tell to several individuals, but I believe he said this was all received by council. Because, again, it's a set of claims to the park. Discussing the outer edges of the concrete bollards. "Contacted by windsurfers who have extensive knowledge of articulated concrete. Savilets County installed along shoreline of the Regge Drive. Heard about the Causeway project. Called Dwayne to freeze. I no longer think that the concrete is the answer for stabilizing the beach. It will not work for horseshoe crabs. I want what's best for the crabs, the shoebirds, the shorebirds, I'm sorry. Appears their concrete will not work." So that's the basis of that, that email. Again, from Mr. Klein to Laura Lee. "I thought you'd like to see my comments about Parish Park. I think the plans are being hidden from the public and the park board of directors. The only artist plans available are those arts sketches. Some of the problems with the design, no wide beach, no palms, no easy level access along the whole beach, only two public access points. People have to walk 1,000 feet from their car to the parking lot. Issues with kayaks and windsurfers, access to the water. Horseshoe crab breeding area will be washed away. Sandy areas, shorebirds will be washed away. This is not shown in the artist sketches. That does not, of a design that is not being built. The cost has escalated to 3.5 million. Why can't Tiesville build a good accessible beach? Destruction by Hurricane Emma." And then there was photos attached. Again, email about, set of videos about Sumberero Beach. Email from Joe Peretti says to Robert Jordan, "I'd like to ask you to vote against this. Thank you." From Erin Brickell, her email. "Believing that this would ruin the park and the people and wildlife. Replacing sand that's been eroding away should be the first step. The second step is research, the best way to slow down erosion. Says experts agree, planting with deep-rooted grass is the most effective, least expensive, easiest way to maintain a beach. Once, when the project's in process, it'll be time to observe again and learn what space and funding is available." From Doug Rose. "Coming to Parish Park in Tiesville for tenure surfing, windsurfing, watching, small-town field. The changes about cement walls, reducing parking bothers him. This area is great for families, small children, play on the sandy beach. Parish could use sprucing up. It'd be nice to make it park-friendly for more people. Much more attractive, but not a cement wall. Sandy beach is better for windsurfing and kayaks. Wall will help keep the seawater from entering the parking lot. Where the mutters come and have their fun tearing up the sandy roads. It does look like fun, but it's not for me. They have been doing this for years. Maybe she'll place for them to play." And from Bob Kay, Dan Diesel, residents and others do not want the proposed plans to improve Parish Park reconsider. From Tony, "Please deny the variances. It was tabled previously at BAA. There are so many alternatives to what the commissioner is pushing that will not be so detrimental to the fragile lagoon, or diminish the public usage, or destroy spawning grounds for the horseshoe crabs, would not prevent kite sailing, water paddling, other non-motorized water recreation. This plan is harmful to ecology. Strip of land will create huge problems in the future, contribute to shoreline erosion." None, believe none of the public input was in the current plan, but by denying this or tabling it for further public input would give additional time for shoreline rejuvenation." From Lillian Guzziak, "Family loves our riverside beach. We launch our kayaks off the beach to get exercise. Do not turn this into a parking lot. Enough of them on the water, animals and wildlife that live and use the area affected by humans enough. Keeping the beach with a more natural environment solution will be beneficial to the environment and allow us to use the area. Please insist the county research other options." Then we have the letter from the Windsurfing Association. "Expressing support for Parish Park to remain the same. It's a cherished launch. They believe the windsurfers are stewards of the resources and shared desire to find the right balance. It's your hope they will be open to the input of local ambassadors and attendants at the council meeting. Want you to reconsider." From De Bato. "The Marine Resources Council is dedicated to restoration of Indian River Lagoon. We're proactively supporting Savilets Lagoon project. Repair mistakes to the lagoon in Bravard County. Natural function. Major horseshoe crab nesting areas, as well as providing natural shoreline for the marine life. Parks and Rec, yields managers know better than most, we all have responsibility to protect the lagoon. Provides access to recreation. They're concerned that the plan modifications over time will reduce the natural characteristics and functions, make it a place for the public. They're asking Park and Rec review the modification plans and incorporate changes for the lagoon." Erner, too, to council members. "We love our beach. The county's plan is unthinkable. Wipe out the beach we love and replace with a parking lot. No, no, no." So opposed. Adam Locke. To council members writing you concerning the plan to alter Parish Park Causeway. "Background is an avid water sports person, non-motorized access, windsurfing. Understands the beach and Causeway launches are valuable assets for water-related recreation. The decision to harden the beach should give thought not only to erosion control and environmental impacts, but all non-motorized recreational access. First, the locals flock to the Causeway beaches for lifestyle. Once it's unnaturally hardened, the access brings joy to locals, is gone forever. We've seen this with the hardening of the Indian River Lagoon. Degrades water quality and increases turbidity. Once urged, council to consider softer, less expensive approaches and rocks and boulders. Restore it with sand. Adding the simple barrier so cars can't back towards edges is a plus. Great example of shoreline restoration using sand as seaway drives, city folk appears. No hardening, no asphalt, easy to maintain. Please consider the recreation as a quality of life for the environment and roads." From John Inga Britson. "We love our beach. The county's plan is unthinkable. It'll become another seawall or riprap barrier seen everywhere in Florida. A rather concern, an earthy design." Billy Bosch. "Request to reconsider of denying the variance. Economic and recreational impacts." Economic and recreational impacts regarding the plan for Parish Park should be performed before a decision can be made. Will have a negative impact on water sports. Large community between Melbourne and Orlando that use the park on a regular basis. Understand it'll impact them greatly, reduce their usage. Been in business for 12 years on the Space Coast. From Deb. Do not allow destruction of one Tysl's unique family friendly dog included beaches that's been used for generations. Stop the plan, insist on a more natural friendly solution. Don't preserve the beach. Again, from Tom Abbott, windsurfer, nature observer. Don't allow, do not allow the Parish Park proposed variance to be approved. The issues, water access, parking, artificial lighting, disruption of horseshoe crabs. From Melissa Stahl. You have the ability to stop and assist on a more natural solution. Don't let the intrusion on the beach go forward. From Kevin Ross. 30 years ago discovered Playland Beach and the National Wildlife. Seven years ago was driving Orlando with his friends, thinking about buying a house. Contacted realtors, goes to Parish Park windsurfer. Windsurfing, kite surfing, sailing represents a large group of environmental enthusiasts. Parish Park is only water access. We're at Parish Park. How would you like to live in a world without football? Please don't let Park and Rec install a concrete foundation with still bollards blocking access. Catarans, day sailors, kites, windsurfers and the like. If you approve the park department variance, you'll be killing activities at Parish Park. Environmentally friendly solution using grass and sand to save the beach. Don't oppose paving over. From Marcia. Before you decide to pave paradise, put up a parking lot. Consider alternative, more environmentally sound solutions to Parish Park issue. Building solid features on a shifting barrier island can create more erosion, encourage chemical runoff, necessitate long term and expensive commitment to maintaining spot as it is, including repaving the sand deposits. Please consider lower impact approach, especially consider costs after hurricanes. From Cheryl Abbott. Enjoy spending the days at Parish Park. It's usually packed with windsurfers, kiter, jet skiers and families. This plan would make it difficult to gain access to the river by a wall of concrete. The proposed plan cuts back the number of parking spaces, limiting enjoyment. Look at potential viable plans be looked at and reject variants till a better plan can be made. Bill Klein. I received the drawings. Yes, and I know he's here. Have congested traffic hazard with families and picnic supplies umbrellas. Recommended a design change eliminating a lane closest to the water on the two lane road. Eliminate sidewalk. Replace slope firm landscapes. Allow multiple access paths. Wanted to print a sketch of the design and have a second public meeting. Believes the present design has safety and access flaws. Should be corrected before it goes to council. Only one ramp. And this was in line with the previous email from Mr. Klein regarding concerns about access to the water and walking several thousand feet to the stairs or ramps is unwieldy, unacceptable, lead to bad reviews. Laura Ward to staff asking to see what's going on with the plans and have they changed. Joe Prade to Dan. Residents discussing his concern about others who decide to go to Parish Park for the day to fish or barbecue. If parking lot is added, this will be lost. Who wants to vote against Parish Park when it comes to vote? Don't take away beautiful beaches. From Stuart Bumpus. I am in agreement. The Parish Park needs to be preserved as much as possible. Very proud of Tysl. Let's not forget to listen to citizens. Sidney Davis. Urges you to do what's in your power to save ecosystem. Horseshoe crabs are spawning. Brevard County leaders want it paved. Horseshoe crabs, again, concerns over the horseshoe crabs and their mating and laying eggs, providing bait industry. Importance of the biomedical industry and paving Parish Park would lead to decline of horseshoe crabs. And shoreline like as, the shoreline migrates landward. Then from, another one from Bill Klein, again showing the pictures. Regarding BAA's concerns, public wants to know about the changes at the public meeting. It reduces his opinions, recre, greatly reduces recreation, creates traffic hazard, creates erosion and possible parking collapse, destroys Florida's productive horseshoe crab breeding area, destroys large shoreline and different shore birds in Tysl recommends changes to the project. Get a grant to install native shoreline protection. Get a grant to build the road and parking areas with sufficient space, installing restrooms. And again, there's pictures. The last one is from Merrill's Marleys or Marlis Breckle to council. Harden versus shoreline where they discuss the natural shoreline benefits, living shoreline benefits. Shoreline hardening interrupts natural shoreline processes. Harden shorelines, Colinsey Waltz bulkheads are a default method to hold the line. They're detrimental and concerns regarding that. Again, these are emails I believe were submitted by council. As ex parte communications, one letter by be aware of the issues that were raised as they're made part of the record.
Okay, sir. We are on public purpose variance number one dash 2021 Parish Park. Consider variances to the shoreline setback and landscape yard for purposes of constructing improvements at Parish Park. The applicant Jason Kellogg, on behalf of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners, is requesting the following variances for the purposes of constructing a trailhead on the property located in the P zoning, public zoning district located at One Max Brewer Causeway. Shoreline protection setbacks to allow a variance to the 50-foot shoreline setback. Required landscape yards to allow a variance to the 20-foot landscape yard requirement adjacent to the public right of way. Description of landscape yards to reduce the tree planting requirement. Per the applicant, the purpose, the proposed improvements would provide the following. Paved drive aisle with stormwater treatment. Currently untreated stormwater runoff from the Max Brewer Memorial Parkway is being discharged into the lagoon. Improve access to Parish Park's beach and adjacent bike trail by providing a paved ADA compliant pedestrian path that will improve conductivity and safety. Lighting so the park can be used safely at night and for events and a contribution to the statewide Florida coast to coast trail system. Council should consider the following criteria. The project has been found to serve a public interest by the city council to clearly demonstrate a net benefit to the public which outweighs the strict application of the code. The granting of the variance is consistent with the overall intent of the regulations and would not be contrary to public interest. Variance granted is the minimum that would make it possible for the full implementation of the public purpose project. The activity would provide direct public benefit which would exceed those that may be lost to the public. The applicant has demonstrated a bona fide need for the variance based on operational necessity and due to the conditions of the project and/or property, the literal application and enforcement of the regulation would require a practical deficiency or unnecessary hardship. The applicant has been provided responses to these criteria in staff report and presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the variances with conditions that ground cover be provided in a place of sod around the trees and the parking lot entrance drive on the westmost parking area. Ms. Busaka is here to provide a quick update for you.
Ms. Busaka.
First of all, I want to mention that the report and all exhibits along with my resume have been provided to the clerk and are part of the record. On page 83 of 218 of your agenda package, there is a description of each of the criteria by which you are to review this. And so I'm going to make some comments about the staff's findings on those. The first is that the project has been found to serve a net benefit to the public. And the project will provide improved protection of the shoreline and wetlands by preventing vehicular encroachment into these areas and also improve water quality by providing for the capture and treatment of water runoff from the parking area. The second is the granting of the variance is consistent with the overall intent of the regulations. I'd like to read from you chapter, I'm sorry, section 30 dash 61 intent. And this is that portion of the land development regulations that establishes the setbacks along the shoreline. And the intent of the shoreline regulations is to improve quality of class two and class three surface waters, minimize shoreline erosion, manage stormwater runoff and protect and enhance the natural functions of these waters. The third criterion is that the variance granted is the minimum that will make possible the full implementation of the public project. And the applicant has stated that the requested variance is the minimum required to meet the proposed design. The fourth criterion is the activity would provide direct public benefits that would exceed those which may be lost to the public. The applicant's response is that the project will provide improved protection of the shoreline and wetlands by preventing vehicular encroachment into these areas and also improve water quality by providing for the capture and treatment of stormwater runoff. The bona fide need is the fifth criterion. And the discussion from the applicant is that the buffers reduce the buildable area to such an extent that almost no parking can be provided. So the staff analysis is that the beach attracts a significant number of visitors, as you know, and that vehicles typically are parked wherever space is available, which may cause conflicts with pedestrians. The improvement to the parking is expected to reduce those conflicts. In addition to that, the unimproved surface threatens the water quality of the lagoon through increased sedimentation and creates steep scarpes which pose navigational hazards for vehicles. There are currently no stormwater facilities on the beach and this project is proposing that stormwater treatment be added. The distance between the water's edge and the FDOT right of way is approximately 70 feet at its narrowest point. There are two setbacks being requested. One is 50 feet from the water's edge and the other is a 20-foot buffer that would encompass the entire 70 feet of the property at its narrowest side. The DOT has provided scrub landscaping on both the north and south side of the existing trail, which in effect provides a scrub buffer between the proposed parking and the public right of way. So the staff believes that the FDOT landscaping meets the intent of the code. Due to the proximity of the parking area to the water and the high salt water table and conditions of the Causeway soils at the site, only a limited number of trees can be planted that would survive well at the site. According to the University of Florida IFAS Extension Fact Sheet, the proposed Simpson stoppers are an easy care drought tolerant and high salt tolerant native plant that's recommended for parking islands and small parking lot landscape trips, strips. Based on the conditions of the site, the use of Simpson stoppers in lieu of overstoryed trees is justified. That's the third variance requested. These are conditions that are peculiar to the property which is narrow. There are existing FDOT improvements in the soil and salinity conditions of the property limit landscaping option. The staff recommends approval of the variance to allow a parking lot in the 50-foot shoreline protection setback and approval of the variances from the 20-foot landscape yard buffer and the tree and shrub requirements. With the condition that the westernmost parking lot be required to provide ground cover in place of sod around the proposed trees at the parking lot entrance drive.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Not at this time. I will make a short comment before we get started. And part of that is that I want to make it clear because the emails that I received that we got to hear partially read a moment ago, came across to me like some of you think that this is our project and that this is like a second hearing and we're going to approve or deny this project. And that's not the case. This is a county project on county property. They sought the grants and got the grants and have a very semi-major project going on over at Parish Park or hope to. But with that, I just watched a school board meeting recently where the people all showed up thinking that it was going to be a school board vote on an issue. I'll leave it at that. And it wasn't. It wasn't. It was a state mandated. So that's, was out of their hands. In this case, we're simply being asked for a landscape variance and a setback. We are not, this is not our project. This is not a second hearing at Tysl. Boy, I almost said Tysl High School. This is, this is not at Tysl City Hall. It is a county project and we are being asked for a variance. So I want to get that clear because some people are here, well, you guys, you know, you stop this, don't do that. It's already had two public hearings and that's not my, my deal because I have many of you talk to me about that as well. And I'll leave it at that. The second thing is we likely, I don't know the number, but we likely will have so many speakers that I'm going to make sure that we stay on our three minutes. And that's not rude or crude to anyone. I'm going to be as fair as I can. But if I give this person more than this person wants more, and we've got five, six, I want everybody to stay in your three minutes and we will then move on. And as you heard, this is a quasi judicial hearing. And the hearing part means that we're just kind of witnesses. And we've got to kind of make a verdict at the end for what we hear. So with that, quasi judicial, the process goes. Our applicant may speak first if they wish. Our applicant may present first and then all the cards get called and then the applicant will speak last. I do want to say because they're the applicant in quasi judicial rules, they don't have a three minute rule. They present. You hear what they present and you certainly can rebut that. At the end, after they hear what you all say, they can summarize at the end. And then it comes to us on the variance. So you all come up and do your presentation. And you certainly can go over there. There you go. So this is the applicant. Introduce yourself as the applicant and who you are and who you represent. And we will go from there.
Yes, good evening. This is on, correct? Okay. Good evening. My name is Abigail Jorenby. I'm the deputy county attorney for Brevard County. And it's a pleasure to be with you tonight to represent Brevard County. Just a procedural note, Mr. Mayor, if it's the council's pleasure, if you'd like to go ahead and take public comment first. Obviously, the applicant would have no objection to doing that before we actually make her presentation. If that would speed the process.
That is absolutely your call as the applicant. You have the right to speak now and present. And you have the right to speak at the end of the public comment. And city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. It's quasi judicial. They have the opportunity to present now. Public comment and the rebuttal. That is our process. I would suggest that way the public may have comments based on your presentation they wouldn't otherwise know to address.
Well, then we'll just proceed forward.
So you will hold until the end or you go now?
We'll proceed right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So once again, my name for the record is Abigail Jorenby. I'm the deputy county attorney for Brevard County. And it is a privilege to be here tonight. We are requesting three variances for a public purpose project at Parish Park. We believe this is a public purpose project in that the project demonstrates a net benefit to the public as it provides public accessible park and recreation facilities. And I have with me tonight a team of individuals. First, I have Mary Ellen Donner, our Brevard County Parks and Recreation Director. I have Virginia Barker, Brevard County Natural Resources Management Director. I have Timothy Laurie. I have Timothy Laurie, our Construction Coordinator from Brevard County, as well as we have our consultants from CPH, which is an architectural and engineering organization. We have Amy Daly, who is the Vice President and Director of Environmental Services, Joseph Lefaso, who is next to me on my right, who's our Professional Engineer in Transportation and Trans Traffic, as well as Jason Kellogg, who is a Professional Engineer in Stormwater and Drainage, and that is our team for tonight's meeting. So as you are aware, Parish Park is located within the city of Titusville, but it is maintained and managed by Brevard County. And at this time, we have a proposed project to do improvements at the park, which include the following: a paved drive aisle, clearly identified parking area, dedicated stormwater drainage system, and ADA-compliant pedestrian path, to name a few of the improvements. The request tonight is for three variances, and this stems from the unique nature of this particular parcel, which is very long and very narrow. And because of that, we have to ask for three variances from the city of Titusville. The first variance, and you're going to hear more information from Mr. Lefaso through our PowerPoint, but just to give you an overview, the first variance is from City of Titusville Code Section Thirty-sixty-three, which requires a fifty-foot shoreline protection setback. The second variance is from Section Thirty-three-three-two, which requires the measurement for the twenty-foot landscape buffer required for the parcel. And then we also have another requirement under Section Thirty-three-three-two, which requires overstory trees. And we will present our reasons why we're requesting the variances that we are tonight in our PowerPoint presentation. Looking at the Code Section, Section Thirty-four-three-one-two-point-one, which is the public-purpose variances that we're operating under here and we're requesting under here tonight, the City Council may grant a public-purpose project variance to land development regulations where justified by operational need, physical constraint, best professional practices, or to improve the overall layout and design of a project determined to serve a public purpose. Your code specifically states in Thirty-four-three-one-two-point-two that the City Council shall grant a variance request when, in the opinion of the City Council, the literal enforcement of such ordinance or regulations would impose an operational hardship upon the implementation of a public-purpose project. And we believe our project presents this, actually meets all the requirements under your code. And if I may, just briefly go through those requirements. I know Ms. Busaka just did earlier, but I'd like to just address it from the county's perspective. Under Thirty-four-three-one-two-point-two, the council must consider the following criteria. The first one, the project has to be found to serve a public purpose by the City Council and clearly demonstrate a net benefit to the public, which outweighs the strict application of the code. The county will show that the project serves a public purpose, and the net benefit to the public outweighs the strict application of the code, in that upon approval of these variances, the county will fulfill the county's commitment to provide access to the Florida Coast-to-Cost Trail Network. We will provide an ADA-compliant access to the park for all park patrons. We will minimize erosion caused by vehicular traffic and improve water quality by providing treatment to stormwater runoff. You will hear that none of this is actually happening at the park currently, in its current condition. The second criteria for the council to consider is whether the variance is consistent with the overall intent of the regulations. It would not be contrary to the public interest. The property is zoned public and is currently used as a park and will remain a park. The requested variances do not change that use in any way. Instead, the granting of the variances are consistent with the overall regulations of the city code. For example, Code Section Thirty-sixty-one provides that the intent of the shoreline protection code is to, one, improve the quality of Class II and Class III surface waters surrounding and within the city, to minimize shoreline erosion, to manage stormwater runoff, and to protect and enhance the natural functions of these waters. This project has been specifically designed, and you will hear this from our consultant, this project has been specifically designed to address these issues that your code requires. So we do meet the overall intent of the regulations. The third criteria is whether the variance is the minimum variance that will make the reasonable use of the land building or structure. Once again, as I mentioned, this parcel is very unique, and it's very long and narrow. Specifically, if we were to apply the fifty-foot shoreline setback, that would render the property essentially unimprovable by the county, as that that would require the setback to essentially run down the center line of the property. Moreover, in that particular request, the county is asking it to be treated as the same as any other property that's located in your shoreline setback protection area. Essentially, in that area, that overlay district is basically to the east and south of the Parish Park, and essentially, in that area, the setback, the shoreline setback is twenty feet, and that's what the county is asking here tonight. Essentially, Parish Park, because we're just a little bit to the, I'm sorry, to the east, and I'm sorry, the overlays to the west and south, because we are to the east, we're actually required to have a fifty-foot setback for the shoreline protection. However, if we had just been included in that overlay, it would have been twenty feet. And that overlay basically runs from Parish Medical Center basically south of Highway Fifty. So that's kind of a good area, and includes quite a few parks as well, like Sandpoint Park, Marina Park, even Kennedy Point Park is located in that overlay area. So if we were proposing this project in any of those parks, at that point, we would only have a twenty-foot buffer. The application of the twenty-foot landscape buffer, as provided in the city code, cannot be satisfied because the right-of-way line that we are to measure from is essentially in the water. The additional requirement of overstory trees is also problematic in that area, because essentially, it's requiring us to put oak trees in, when actually, those do not do well. They're not salt tolerant, as well as they will not be able to really grow roots into the soil in order to hold them in a high-velocity or high-wind event. You'll hear more from our CPH consultants on that. The fourth criteria for you to consider is whether the activity would provide direct public benefits which would exceed those that may be lost to the public. The improvements that we are seeking to build at Parish Park definitely provide direct benefits to the public by allowing ADA-compliant access throughout the park, aiding in the prevention of further vehicular erosion of the beach, and improving water quality by providing treatment to the causeway runoff. In addition, the park improvements provide access to the Florida Coast-to-Cost Trail Network. All of these benefits exceed any that may be lost to the public. The final criteria is whether the applicant has demonstrated a bona fide need based upon operational necessity, and due to the conditions of the project and/or the property, the literal application or enforcement of the regulation would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. As we will discuss, the county has a bona fide need for these three variances. If we do not receive the variances, essentially, this renders this piece of property, because of the unique size and nature, unbuildable. We are not, we cannot bring another project forward. Any other project we have would have to require these variances. So based on that, prior to actually turning this over to Mr. Lefaso, I would like to read an email that the county received late yesterday from Lisa Gregg. She is the Program and Policy Coordinator of Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, Division of Marine Fisheries Management, and we would like to submit copies, and we are with the city clerk, we have plenty of copies for everyone. We would like to submit this into the record and read it into the record, this email. So this is Lisa Gregg from Florida Fish and Wildlife, and this is dated March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, at four-thirty-four. Mary Ellen, Tim, and Dawn, staff from FWC, Brevard County, and CPH met today and walked through FWC's concerns for the Parish Park Trailhead project. As a result of this meeting, FWC's concerns regarding potential project impacts to this critical horseshoe crab nesting beach have been fully addressed, provided the project is constructed according to the plans presented in the meeting today. We would like to take this opportunity to encourage Brevard County to secure funding for future maintenance and improvements to the beach in this area. Please let us know if there's any assistance we can provide to support these futures efforts. Thank you, Lisa. And once again, Lisa Gregg from Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Lefaso. We do have our presentation.
Thank you very much, Abigail. My name is Joseph Lefaso. I work for CPH Incorporated. We are the engineering and architecture consultant to Brevard County for this project. I am a licensed civil engineer in the state of Florida with a master's degree in civil engineering. I've been working in the state of Florida in engineering for seven and a half years, and with CPH for six of those. So bringing it back to why I roll here tonight, tonight, we're here to talk about the variance request from the county for the trailhead at Parish Park. So just as a little bit of context for this project, Parish Park is an important part of the Coast-to-Cost Trail, which is a continuous paved, multi-use trail across the state of Florida from the Gulf of Mexico to the Atlantic Ocean that will span approximately two-hundred-and-fifty miles when completed. The Coast-to-Cost Trail will link communities between St. Petersburg and Titusville, and will include two of the state's most popular trails, the Fred Markey Pinellas Trail and the West Orange Trail, both of which have fueled the economic transformation of communities such as Dunedin and Winter Garden. So now to speak about the location of this project. Parish Park is located within the city of Titusville on land which is maintained by the Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department, and is located on the east side of the Max A. Brewer Memorial Parkway Causeway, which connects the city of Titusville to Merritt Island. And you can see the location here in the red rectangle, and just a moment ago, when Abigail was speaking about that shoreline overlay district, this map is actually from city code, and the area in the blue-green, which stretches the entire length of the shoreline within the city of Titusville's limits, is the shoreline overlay district. It is bound by the right-of-way of multiple roads on the eastern side, excuse me, and on the eastern side by the high-water line of the Indian River Lagoon. So it is because of that eastern boundary that the few parcels, such as ours and Parish Park, on the eastern end of the causeway are excluded from that zone. That will be an important thing to remember for later. So again, this is just an aerial photograph showing Parish Park's location from space on the Max A. Brewer Causeway, again, here shown in the red rectangle. All right, so now to discuss some of the existing conditions at Parish Park. Today Parish Park is used by local residents and visitors for all manner of water sports, ranging from fishing, kayaking, jet skis, canoes, parasailing, and more. It is also a favorite location of nature enthusiasts who come to observe the wider range of wildlife present in this location of the Indian River Lagoon. Parish Park is also a prime location for viewing rocket launches from nearby Cape Canaveral. To facilitate these roles, Parish Park today essentially functions as a long sand parking lot and impromptu boat launch. While this is a benefit to the users, this does present some issues. So firstly, because of the use of the park, there is embankment erosion due to boat launching from vehicle trailers. The launching also wears away at the grass, holding the sand embankment in place. As you can see here, this is the location where boat launching has occurred, and there is a grass embankment that protects that upper portion of the beach from the water on the lower portion of the beach, and that's going to be important to remember later, again, just to keep in mind. But this is the existing condition on the beach. In addition, this erosion is exacerbated by washouts, as we'll show on the next slide. Now, the washouts occur because there's runoff from the existing Max A. Brewer Parkway, which is situated uphill of the beach, and when the rain falls on it now, there's nothing preventing it from washing down over the parking area and through any of the gaps that are broken in that berm where the grass has been pushed away due to human activity. When that happens, it takes the sand away that would have been kept in place by the grass berm. Now, there are other issues are the potholing on the drive aisle portion, and again, this is caused many times by human activity, by the mudding. You'll see ruts form, and over time, those fill with water and expand, and you get this sort of effect that occurs in the driving area. So we've seen the existing conditions, and now we see the proposed condition of what the county and CPH plan to do at Parish Park. And this is a photograph that is the exact same exhibit that was presented at the public meeting in two thousand and nineteen when we met on-site. So this shows the proposed drive aisle, the parking stalls, the sidewalk, and the side parking lot in the grass area where the public meeting was held. So these proposed improvements of Parish Park would provide a paved drive aisle and parking area served by a dedicated storm drain system. This would not only reduce erosion, but would provide treatment to the stormwater runoff from the Max Brewer Memorial Parkway, which is currently flowing straight into the Indian River Lagoon untreated. This would also improve access to Parish Park's beach and adjacent bike trail by providing a paved ADA-compliant pedestrian path for these facilities. This would be both a connectivity and a safety improvement. We would also provide lighting to Parish Park so that it can be used safely for nighttime events, and it would be part of Brevard County's continuing contribution to the statewide Florida Coast-to-Cost Trail system. In order for these improvements to occur, however, the project will need three variances from the current City of Titusville city code. One, the fifty-foot shoreline setback. Two, the twenty-foot landscape buffer. And three, the overstory tree requirement, and we will now address those in turn. So the first thing I wish to draw your attention to, having exhibits distributed, the what is being distributed now is a hard copy of the exhibit shown on this slide. What this slide is showing is the proposed improvements of Parish Park with the setbacks overlaid on top of it. And what you can see from top to bottom, that upper blue line in the diagram is the existing water line, and then the red line is a fifty-foot setback from it. Now, when we say water line, we mean the mean annual flood line as defined in City of Titusville's city code. The other line we see on the bottom, which is in blue as well, is the back of that existing trail, and then in green is a twenty-foot offset from that, which is the landscape buffer. Now, pay close attention to the fact that if both of these are imposed, you see that the red and green lines actually cross one another, such that if these are imposed upon the property, it is essentially undevelopable. The setbacks completely encompass this parcel due to the shape and location. So the next slide, and now we are distributing similar exhibits, is showing the variance requests that we are asking for. So the blue lines have not moved, the water line is in the same place, and the existing trail is in the same place. However, the red line is now a twenty-foot setback from that water line, and the landscape buffer space is behind those existing FDOT plantings, which are currently in place on Parish Park today. If you go out there, you will see them. And you can see here now that, in fact, it is, the proposed improvements are between the red and green lines. It is now constructible within the variances that are allowed. So flipping to the next slide. Just as a little bit of background to that shoreline setback, Parish Park's location places it adjacent to Class II waters. Section Thirty-sixty-three of City Titusville City Code, as shown above, requires a fifty-foot shoreline setback to any proposed improvements at Parish Park, which is utterly unfeasible to the size and shape of the parcel. However, the same city code already provides relief from this fifty-foot setback to many property owners on the Indian River, and that is, again, going back to that shoreline overlay district. All zoning within the TSA, except for shoreline mixed use, is allowed already under city code, a twenty-foot setback. So everywhere in that slide where we showed the map, where the entire coastline along the Indian River of the city of Titusville was in green, anywhere within green that was developed prior to this ordinance, which was in two thousand and eighteen, that established the shoreline overlay district, is permitted relief currently from the fifty-foot setback to a twenty-foot setback. Now, moving on to address the green line, which is that landscape buffer. So the city code also requires that, due to this land use classification, Parish Park must maintain a twenty-foot-wide landscape buffer yard, as shown above. So we are considered a Type B, the minimum width is twenty feet. This is all per the city's code. It states that the beginning of the landscape buffer in city code, Section Thirty-three-thirty-one Paragraph B, is measured from, quote, "the property line to a depth prescribed in the code." The issue with this is that if you look on those handouts that we just provided, you'll see at almost the top of the page, a gray line that is dashed. That line is the state's right-of-way line. The state owns not only the entirety of this causeway, but actually well out into the water on either side. There is no normal property line from which to measure the landscape yard, the point of beginning, and given the language within the city code, we are essentially asking, as our variance, that because the distance from the pavement of Max A. Brewer Parkway to the back of those existing FDOT plantings is over twenty feet, that our property be considered sufficiently buffered by the existing FDOT plantings that are already planted on either side of the trail and are there today. Now, if Parish Park must have a landscape yard that extends twenty feet beyond that trail, if we don't measure that beginning of the buffer yard from the edge of the pavement of the Max A. Brewer Parkway, but instead you measure it from the back of that trail, there is insufficient room remaining- there is insufficient room remaining to construct the proposed improvements, as shown by the green line in the first exhibit. If, however, the variance is granted, that would allow the 20-foot landscape yard to be measured from the edge of the roadway and include the trail, there would be sufficient room on-site to construct the improvements. We believe this is reasonable because the state of Florida has already lined the bike trail plantings, which provide the buffering between Parish Park and Max A. Brewer parkway. And while the primary purpose of Parish Park remains a beachfront recreational area, it is now also serves as the main access to this end of the bike trail, the trailhead portion of the project. Therefore, the park and the trailer effectively conjoined facilities and should be allowed to work in tandem to provide the necessary buffer space. Lastly, the last variance that we're requesting is in regards to the overstorey trees. The city of Titusville city code, section 30, requires the planting of overstorey trees on developed lots and defines overstorey trees as to "species having an average mature spread of crown greater than 20 feet and reach a mature height of at least 60 feet", section 30-321. Such overstorey trees, typically species of oaks, but not exclusively, would function well on most sites, however not at Parish Park. This is for two reasons. The brackish water conditions would not be conducive to the health of such trees, and even if they were to survive this, the roots of the trees would remain shallow due to the high water table on the beach. This would result in a high risk of the trees falling due to high winds, which are prevalent on the causway. And this is because without the root system deep enough to counterbalance the upper portion of the tree, if the wind were to catch the branches and the leaves, it would just topple it over. The same city code already provides relief from this by permitting trees, including palms, having an average mature spread of crown less than 20 feet, may be arranged in grouping so as to create the equivalent of 20-foot crown spreads and shall count as one required tree from the same section. Suitable trees to meet the code requirements, such as sable palms, already exist at Parish Park. However, to meet the requirement, a total of 75 sable palms would have to be planted to create an equivalent number of the required overstorey trees. While the room to plant that number of sable palms exists within the project limits, the sheer number of trees that would be planted would likely obstruct the view of rocket launches and provide a vertical barrier that would be unfavorable for windsailing and other aerial-based sports. As such, is the county's desire to retain the landscape plan as already designed, which makes use of shorter understory trees instead, thus requiring a variance from the code requirements. In conclusion, we would respectfully ask the granting of these three variants, the 50-foot shoreline setback, the 20-foot landscape buffer, and the overstorey tree requirement. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Questions?
Okay, so that's your presentation to start, and you're good?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go to public, and then you will have the last call. All right, would you call the cards, please?
Yes, sir. I just need clarification, because I was handed additional cards that was supposed to be part of the applicant.
I'm sorry?
I have additional cards that I was told was going to be part of the applicant.
We put in cards, we have our team members here, so they have maybe not spoken. It was just the two of us right now, but if there are questions, we are available for...
So you just want to go to the public at this time?
That is correct.
Yet.
Okay. It's John Ingerberitson, I believe?
John Ingerberitson, yes. I've got a package of, and, this is a package of all the photographs that Oral Lee and other associates and I have prepared in advance. I'm John Ingerberitson, 3610 Belle Arbor Circle. I have been a resident of central Florida since 1985. I'm a distributor of beach items along the east coast, and I've seen water access for swimmers and water sports enthusiasts shrink rather rapidly in the years I've been a resident of Florida. People drive for 50 miles or more to enjoy parks like Parish. The friendliest park for all is at Fort Pierce. This is the Fort Pierce South causway, I think it's called Seaway Drive. The attorney mentioned that. And you can see they've got ballards to keep the watercraft from being launched with trailers away from the water's edge. And anybody can look at this on Google Earth or see other public photographs or go take a tour. So this is what we want as water sports and swimmers, everyone. This is what we all want. And why can't we have it here? Prior to the trailhead project, there have been plenty of other water sports enthusiasts that are being displaced by bike path people? There have been hundreds of people over the years parking on Titusville causway, accessing the water. Now we're going to be displaced by a parking lot that we had very little inputs, very little inputs. We were presented the program, and the artist's renditions don't really match up with the technical drawings. So that sums my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? I see none. Thank you. Next card, please.
Kevin Rosa.
I'm Kevin Rosa, 1500 Hardy Street. I moved to Titusville specifically to go to Parish Park. I'm there five days a week. I would like to, for windsurfing, kitesurfing. I'd like to rebut what the engineer said. As far as, you know, there's a little bit of jet ski erosion as far as when they pull the trailers out, but what's happening, if you remember the picture of the puddles you saw a few minutes ago? Basically what's happening, that's my picture, I took that quite a while back. There's a group of four-wheelers, and they, they'll stop and hold their foot on the, like, I'm just trying to explain why his solution is not what we need. They hold their foot on the brake, grind a hole, they all take turns doing that, wait for terrain, we'll get a giant puddle like this. Then they come back and grind on the edge of the grass, drain the puddle into the lagoon. That's why all the washouts are there. And I see this five days a week. Windsurfers, kiter's, raise your hands, you see it happening as well? Okay, all right, so there's that. As far as access, this is our last access. You know what I mean? We keep saying windsurfers, we're kiter's, paddleboarders, catamaran sailors. To get a catamaran in the water, you're not going to do it at a motorized boat launch. Day sailors as well. The Parks Department has a history of failure. Kennedy Pointe Park, Port St. John Boat Ramp, Space View Park, all collapsed. This footer with ballards, if the water goes up and down a foot, foot and a half per season, it's going to fall into the water, I'm predicting by the first February after completion. Bikes don't float. Why do bikes have to take our, you know, they can have parking, you know, we want parking, but they've got Parish Park, Sandpointe Park, Space View Park. Why do bikes have to take away our only water access that we have left here? The people that come up with a grass and sand solution like John just showed you are going to be the most loved people in Titusville. The people that go for this concrete footer with ballards are going to be anything but loved. As far as the solution, if we have a dune with sand on it in a row of pine pilings like you saw in that picture, it's going to stop the jet ski erosion, the mud truck erosion. It'll be impossible for them to erode it. What they're doing is basically fifth-grade physics, and the person that designs this park only has to be smarter than a fifth grader. On game day, where are the kiter's? They're at Parish Park. During the Super Bowl, where are the kiter, the windsurfers? They're at Parish Park. This is our football. It's our religion. If you take it away from us, it's like you're taking away our religion and you're taking away our football. I represent Nemo, non-motorized environmental enthusiast. We're three weeks old, we have 200 people in our group, we're going to grow to thousands, and you probably don't want 1,000 like stands up here every week, so we really want sand with ballards. We have more pictures of sand with, not ballards, but pine pilings. The brightest minds in the world are right here at NASA, SpaceX, United Launch Alliance, Boeing, Lockheed Martin. They have the technology.
And your time is up, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the visuals. Thank you.
Yeah, we're bringing dirt back from Mars right now, but we can't figure out how to wash it, keep it from washing away at Parish Park without paving it over.
Next card, please.
Thank you.
It's G. Eric, it looks like D-I-R-S-C-H-K-A.
I do like visuals.
Good evening, City Council. My name's Eric Derschka, 2021, Breezy Hill Lane, Titusville. I've been a Titusville resident since the 1970s, and I've been sailing small catamarans, typically Hobie cats from the Max Brewer causway since the 80s. As you know, sailing is low-impact, quiet, and non-polluting recreation. Sailing does not interfere with other lagoon and beach activities. The Parish Park Trailhead, as planned, will eliminate the ability to roll a catamaran into the water. There needs to be a section for launching small, non-motorized craft like a lightweight day sailor or a catamaran. Sail catamarans cannot launch from a typical concrete boat ramp. There are reasons why, and I don't have time to explain them all, so I'll just explain one. Catamarans have to be rigged and set up pointing directly into the wind. Since the wind can come from any direction, the only way to point them into the wind is to pull the catamaran up to the shoreline, pointing directly into the wind. The only way to do that is to launch on a shoreline with a beach. There is no other lagoon beach with public access within 20 miles of the Max Brewer causway. Kelly Park in Merritt Island, which is on the Banana River Lagoon, is the nearest. A public lagoon beach is rare and should be kept open for catamarans. The current Parish Park Trailhead project will eliminate from Titusville the view of a catamaran sailing on the Indian River Lagoon. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Nelson.
Eric, don't go anyplace. So let me ask, are you saying there's no way to get that catamaran on the beach?
Exactly.
How do you usually do it?
I'm sorry?
How do you usually do it?
Right, well, right now, it's pretty easy to do it. You can see from the pictures, you can slide it right in off of the sandy beach shoreline. The proposed design has a curb and ballards all the way along the shoreline. So there's nowhere to be able to get the boat into the water.
So let me ask, because I remember there being ramps there, am I right?
There are ramps present, however, the ramp is for access. They would not be set up in a configuration that he would slide it straight down in the way he's described.
The ramps are more for the kayaks and the canoes kind of thing?
The ramps are for ADA access down to the beach, so...
It's more for a wheelchair.
Oh, okay. So it would not be...
This photograph shows you, here's the trailer for the catamaran.
Okay.
You're done?
Yeah.
Real quick then, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
How would you do it with this?
Right, there'd have to be a section without ballards or removable ballards.
Okay, but as this picture looks, you still couldn't put the catamaran in?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Next card, please.
William Klein.
I'm William Klein, live on 3 Indian River Avenue in Titusville. Parish Park should be designed with a 30-to-40-foot-wide protective landscape dune. This is part of why we need a wide setback from the water. Parish Park Trailhead project is designed for bicycles to park their cars, not for people using the park. Shorelines are dynamic environments where wave action naturally moves beach sand, causing beach buildup and washout. Seawalls intensify the wave energy, creating greater erosion in front and under the seawall, which causes failure. They eliminate the buildup in sand in front of the wall. They destroy natural beach marine habitat. Seawalls are more expensive than sand renourishment. Hardened shorelines caused the collapse of the sidewalk by the Max Brewer Bridge and astronaut platform during Hurricane Irma. The gradual slope of a 20-foot-wide beach in front of a living shoreline absorbs the wave energy, decreasing the erosion and allowing more sand buildup. A 30-to-40-foot-wide dune covered with deep-rooted tolerant plants will hold the sand and accumulate sand. Parish Park has suffered 60-to-80 feet of shoreline washout since the Max Brewer causway was built because no natural living shoreline was planted. The bike trail's impervious surface has increased the erosion rate. Sombrero Beach, which should be seen in some of these pictures, is a masterpiece of proper beach park protection using living shorelines. The original land was Kokina Rock. They built a sandy beach with a wide living shoreline dune bordering a landscape park with covered picnic tables and restrooms. Sombrero Beach survived many hurricanes until Hurricane Irma hit with 150 mile-an-hour winds, and the storm surge washed over the beach, the sand, and into the park. The dune grasses and park plantings were covered in sand after the water receded. The restrooms survived because of the dune. Marathon began clearing the sand and bringing hundreds of truckloads of sands to re-nourish the beach two weeks after Hurricane Irma. They widened and raised the dune height. This will provide better protection. This is much quicker and cheaper than rebuilding a higher seawall. The park was completely restored in two years after the hurricane. Titusville should restore the causway to its original width, then build a 30-to-40-foot-wide dune landscape with deep-rooted salt-tolerant plants between a 300-car parking lot and a 20-foot-wide sandy beach for assembling kite and windsurf boards.
Building time is up.
A 30-foot seawall designed without any living shoreline is a recipe for disaster.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. We got the clock running already, I don't know why we did that. Need to reset it.
Next one.
Next card, please.
It's Pam, it's D-I-R-S-C-H-K-A.
Good evening. I'm Pam Derschka, 495 Arbor Ridge Lane, Titusville. It's hard to overstate the serious condition of the water in the lagoon. That should be the first consideration of any project near the water. Secondly, this is a unique access to the water and should be protected. Until recently, I was unaware of the project at Parish Park. How could I be so out of touch with such a major project like this? I read the Florida Today, but I didn't see anything about it. I spend time on Facebook, but apparently not on the sites that have information about this project. So I turned to Google. Nothing came up from the Florida Today about the park. I found that there were two listings about a public hearing on the Space Coast Daily. One was August 25, 2019, about a meeting at Parish Park on September 7. That meeting was reported to have been canceled. The other article was about an October 2, 2019, meeting, quoting "A public meeting to present and discuss the Florida Coast to Coast Parish Park Trailhead will be held from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 2, at Parish Park in Titusville." There was no follow-up article. I also came across a post in the Brevard Parks and Recreation Facebook page about an October 2 meeting. There were seven people who commented and four others who gave a reaction. Two days after the public hearing, Brevard Parks and Recreation Facebook page posted a rendering of the project as shown here. It doesn't look anything like our shore or the plans that I've seen recently. Again, the post had only six individuals commenting and reactions from eight. Even the Titusville Florida, the truth about what's happening with over 31,000 members had only three comments to a post that Mel Martin posted about the October meeting. The largest community involvement appeared to be a change.org petition that drew 1,081 signatures. It was started by a kitesurfing business informing the public about the risk to Parish Park. I've been told there was a Zoom meeting during COVID, but I could find no reference to it. This research does not indicate a very informed public. There are many details I'm still shaky about. I was concerned about paving the parking lot near the water, but maybe it's not pavement, but instead permeable concrete, which could allow filtering. What is the plan along the water's edge? Why are there stairs in the plan going down to the water? Why have the number of parking spaces changed on the different plans? Titusville City Council members should not approve this variance unless they know the answers to these questions. The public deserves to know as well. Protecting our water should be your highest priority.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next card.
Next card?
Melissa Stahl. Melissa Stahl.
And she said, "I'm Melissa Stahl, and I'm from 6273 Sleepy Hollow Drive here in Titusville. Chairman, council members, thank you for the opportunity to talk at you this evening." Now, that may sound a little rude, talking at you, but that's how we, the community, feel about this plan that is being implemented at our park. We feel we are being disregarded. We could talk all night, though, about how we feel about this project and our park. However, what's most important that we have to talk about is the shoreline. That's what matters, and this plan that's presented will destroy that shoreline. The applicant states that the approval for this variance is in the best interest of the general public and that it will provide a better level of service to the public using that park, while also protecting the environment, where in fact it is not to the best interest of the general public. If the proposed design is implemented, then the current users will not need parking, because there will be no beach to attend. The erosion that this construction will cause damages the whole Causeway in the future. It is not to the best interest of the general public, because it clearly eliminates the public's access to the water for the sports and fishing that they currently enjoy. And there is a more natural solution to the real problem, as rendered in this photo. If you go by the beach any day of the week, you will find 451 users of the beach to one trail member that is using the trail, but yet we're going to limit the access and the parking to just 40 slots. The applicant recognizes the requirement of a 50-foot shoreline buffer setback that would prevent the viability of the project, and that for that shoreline setback impacts and prevents development on a large portion of the site. And they reference similar properties within that shoreline protection area that are held to the lesser 20-foot setback. Which properties are those that they're referring to? They're actually properties where the actual setback was granted before the shoreline protection overlay was put into effect. The fact that the other properties have a lesser setback is exactly why an area which has not been intruded upon should be protected against this type of encroachment. The applicant indicates the requested variance of a 20-foot setback is the minimum request in order to accommodate the project. That may be true, for the plan is drawn, but additional, more natural solutions would preserve a minimum of 30- to 40-foot setback by eliminating portions of the hardened structures that are being offered. The applicant shows that the most narrow point of the project is 70 feet, but what isn't mentioned is that the shoreline has been reduced by approximately 10 feet since the beginning of their planning of that project. According to the dimensions on their own drawings, a 1- to 13-foot beach will be all that remains after the improvements are complete. The majority of that shoreline would have less than seven feet of beach. This encroachment is much more than requesting 20-foot variance, it's outrageously asking for you to ignore the entire shoreline protection area and grant them to change Titusville's motto from "The Gateway to Nature of Space" to "The Gateway of Parking Spots and Space."
Thank you. Next.
Laura Ward.
Next card, please.
Laura Ward, excuse me, River Edge Drive. You know, they wouldn't need so many variances if the project were designed to suit the site instead of the other way around. They have the wrong project designed for this spot, that's why they need the variances. To look at who is using our beach, this beach is our free beach. You can go to this beach, if you don't have a boat, you don't have a pool in your backyard, if you don't have a house on the river, everybody goes to this beach. And these are the people that are going to be displaced, having fun down there on the weekend with their tents. And this project basically displaces them and tosses them aside. You can deny this variance. All you have to do is make a finding under, number one, that this parking lot is not a net benefit to the public. And I've got to ask you, in what universe is it a net benefit to the public to kick people off their beach and build a parking lot they won't be able to find a spot in? That is not a net benefit. The applicant has, at this point, presented no evidence to support the idea that this is a net benefit to the public. They've shown, they've had no use studies to show you that this is the proper use, they've had no traffic studies to show you that this is the way to handle traffic, and they've had no safety studies to show you that there's a safety issue on the beach that needs to be solved. There are dozens of ways to deal with roadwater runoff and cars on the water. Just look at what Fort Pierce did here in regard to cars on the water. And if you can't, I'm sure there's a place for a Hobie cat to launch there. The applicant actually showed up at one of the public meetings with a project already designed. They never gave us a chance to take input for our suggestions of a more natural way and solutions that would be more appropriate for what we have there. A net benefit, no way. Number two, you can deny the variance by finding that the variance is not consistent with the intent of the overlay. The city developed a shoreline overlay ordinance with the help of the public. It took years to develop it. The very, the total purpose of that overlay was to keep built stuff away from the water.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Next card, please.
For Lee Thompson.
I need that poster, I need that. You all can spread out so they can see the rest of the pictures, because there's some horseshoe crabs and wildlife photographers and stuff. Oh, Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MIMS. The public purpose objectives for this project are get cars away from the water, stormwater treatment, traffic control and parking, and public safety. Look at the shoreline buffer variance justification, question number two. Will alternative standards promote environmental soundness or improve the overall layout and design to accomplish the intended public purpose? They didn't even answer that question. The answer is yes. There's a variety of alternatives to attain the objectives rather than putting a concrete seawall driveway and parking places on our Causeway. Exfiltration trenches can be put along both sides of the bike path and the driveway to filter stormwater. Traffic can be directed away from the beach and into parking areas using pilings with ropes on them. Free dredged fill can be added to the Causeway to build it back up again. Look at the cross-sections of the parking lot in your plans. There's a drop-off from the top of the concrete bollard foundation down to the beach. People are going to have to go downstairs and ramps located at the extreme ends of the project to get to the beach. I know that the beach looks really pretty right now, the water's low, but by the end of summer, there's no beach left in the middle of the Causeway. The water comes up to the grass. That puts it 10 feet from the concrete bollard foundation. We lost 10 feet of beach in 18 months in 2019 and 20. Those two stakes right there, wherever it is, those two stakes right there were buried by the Causeway a year and a half ago. They're totally exposed now. Look at the way that the waves wash back and forth in the picture of the Causeway beach, wherever it is. Except for the erosion ruts, that beach has been unchanged for years, because it functions as a beach. There's no structure to impede the wave action. When the river rises and the fall, the concrete bollard foundation will turn into a seawall. This picture at Sandpoint Park shows what happens with a seawall. They had to put big rocks next to it to stop the undermining. There's no way that seagrass will grow next to seawalls because of the refraction of the waves slamming into it. And somewhere, this map is a map of the shorelines in Brevard County. 90% of the Causeways and shores south of Titusville have seawalls or rock piles on them, indicated by the red and yellow colors. The dykes of the Wildlife Refuge are being hard-armed. Our Causeway's natural beaches are crucial to the survival in the river of horseshoe crabs and the shorebirds that feed on their eggs. Question number five was also not answered. It fails to say why this project won't further harm the lagoon. It does say that approval of the variance is in the best entrance of the public, and the project will provide level of service to the public while simultaneously protecting the environment. You've heard how this project will impact the public and the environment, there are better ways to accomplish those four objectives. That should be the goal.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Madeline Johnson.
Hello, I'm a kiteboarder. I kite at Parish Park. I learned kiteboarding at Parish Park. I have very rarely seen pedestrians using the walkway or bikers using the walkway, and if they are, they're walking down to me to ask me what I'm doing and how they can get lessons and how they can learn. So, to displace us for bikers on a walkway just doesn't make sense. I've seen people of all shapes and sizes and ethnicities come and talk to me and ask me how they can learn to kiteboard. It's the fastest-growing water sport in the world right now, and it's only been around for three decades. The only thing growing faster might be this group of people who doesn't want this project to ruin a pristine kiteboarding spot. I'm all for the stormwater treatment, I encourage that, I applaud that effort, and I think it can be accomplished with exfiltration trenches, as mentioned before. There is no need for this unnatural, literally paving paradise to put up a parking lot-type solution, when we can have something like this. I've also seen the mutters at Parish Park, I've seen them position their trucks and dig out that grass. It's not caused naturally, and if we could regulate that, we could solve the erosion issue. I just want to say, people love us. People stop, cars pull over, they look to watch us kiteboarding. No one's stopping to watch a bunch of bikers going down a bike path. So, again, to displace this just doesn't make sense. And something like this, something natural and eco-friendly, is a much better solution. Thank you. You have my card.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
One question?
One question.
Come on back, come on back.
Madeline, come back. So, let me ask you, this to me, I was raised here, I've been here all my life, I've been on that beach fish a million times, and I've never seen it look like that. So, to me, our beach is a different type of beach. But my question really is, with the design that they're talking about, you won't be able to kite surf?
No.
Why?
We'll have maybe seven, three feet, as they mentioned, in the summer after the erosion takes place.
Okay, say that again.
We'll have maybe seven, three feet of shoreline between the bollards and the parking lot after the erosion takes place. There'll be nowhere to set up our kites, launch our kites.
Okay.
The seawall that will soon be exposed, once the erosion takes place, will cause unnatural wave action.
Okay.
Making it impossible, the water very turbulent and impossible to kite there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Next card, please.
Steel Bailey.
I grew up jet skiing, kayaking, and creating memories with my family at Parish Park. I'm often in the area as I work on water quality studies and in wildlife monitoring. One of those studies has to do with flooding and the movement of contaminants. While there's no denying that a catastrophic, human-made erosion contributes to the severely altered environment, we shouldn't overlook the critical role that sustainable and well-managed tourism play in advancing conservation and protecting our treasured ecosystem. One of the top reasons tourists are drawn to this destination is the rich biodiversity, unique landscape, and recreational opportunities. Over the last decade, nature-based tourism has become increasingly popular. When animals in natural areas bring tourism dollars and jobs to the community, it can help residents see the importance of keeping their natural assets intact. You'll most likely approve this tonight. I know how it is with federal grants, you never have to turn that down, and this variance is going to help that. I hope you're considering the direct and indirect effect on the environment. Yesterday, I watched a manatee who died on the shoreline and be piled on top of other deceased manatees, and I had to help FWC take that manatee body, so it makes me wonder, I want to hear more about the horseshoe crabs with Lisa Gregg and FWC. But in the past three months, we have had 435 manatees perish in the Indian River Lagoon. You will gradually lose any beach as the shoreline migrates landward, and with turbidity, nothing will grow. Our mammals are already starving to death, not to mention the impact it will have on horseshoe spawning and other wildlife. A shoreline affects the health of an estuary, its fish, and other creatures. I'm asking that you represent the people and their strong desire to save the natural beach they have left and work with them in creating a unique solution to protect what they love. I also just want to add that I have submitted to the county a copy of their grant agreement that includes the funding information and budget justification for the awarded grant being used. I'm still waiting on that information. Somebody came up here and said that they feel that there's been a lack of information, and so I would really appreciate to have a copy of that. Thank you.
Next card, please.
Maureen Rup.
Maureen Rup, 7185 Bright Avenue in Port St. John. I am a board member for 25 years of the Marine Resource Council, and I have a statement on them. The Marine Resource Council is dedicated to the preservation and restoration of the Indian River Lagoon, and we are proactively supporting the Save Our Lagoon project plan, which seeks at great cost to correct and repair past mistakes that have resulted in harm to the lagoon. Parish Park is a special place in Brevard County. It has an important natural function because of its lagoon beach and proximity to the more pristine waters of the Wildlife Refuge. It is a major horseshoe crab nesting area, as well as providing natural shoreline for other marine life. Parks and Recreation Department knows better than most that we all have a responsibility to protect and preserve the diminishing wildlife of our most important habitat, the endangered Indian River Lagoon. In addition, the park provides access to traditional lagoon-based recreation, such as fishing, kiteboarding, and family beach outings. We are concerned that planned modifications to Parish Park will, over time, reduce or eliminate the natural characteristics and functions that make it a special place for both the public and the IRL. We respectfully request that Parks and Recreation Department review current modification plans and incorporate changes that will preserve for the future the natural characteristics of this lagoon treasure. Please look to the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Pete Haddock.
Mayor Pete Haddock, 1237 Litlow Circle, Titusville, Florida. What you're getting handed out are the famous cross-sections that Laura Lee Thompson was talking about. If I have time, I'll go over them later and give you the simple instructions of how to read them, but that's what contractors get when they build, and that's where the rubber meets the road, and that's what will be constructed, because that's what we'll pay a contractor to actually build. With that said, I'm looking at page 63, that instructs council to look at certain criteria when considering a project, a variance. In this particular case, would the activity provide public benefits which... In this particular case, would the activity provide public benefits which outweigh the costs? Well, when I first got here tonight, I had too much trail in my brain. So I went outside, and what do I see? I see the trailhead right across the street called the Welcome Center at the Pritchard House. That's a designated trailhead, has a bicycle shop, and flush toilets. Too much, so I go over on the River Drive and I see Veterans Park. Damn, if there ain't another trailhead there at Veterans Park that has flush toilets and drinking water. So I'm gonna go over to Sandpoint. That trailhead at Sandpoint is crowded with cars. It also has flush toilets, and it also has drinking water. Now, across the river, three-quarters of a mile, if you go across the bridge, and I'm a bicyclist, I do about 70 miles a week on the bicycle. I do another 70 miles hiking, walking, and jogging. And I see Robin Fisher walking over the bridge on a Saturday morning. I'll take my bicycle out there. I'm on both sides of the bridge. As a bicyclist and a trail user, when I hit a trail parking lot, I park and I get the heck out of there. When I go around, we don't stay and enjoy the park. When I go to Parish Park and I'm going through Parish Park, there's people enjoying the beach, there's people picnicking, there's people enjoying the water. It's access to the water. I don't need that access on the bicycle. I don't need that access when I'm running and jogging. I don't care about that, I'm moving. And when I looked at the layout of the parking lot, it's 100% trail-orientated. The parking even faces the road. Now, I've been out to Parish Park with my wife at nighttime, and we've enjoyed the moon over the water and the city lights and the shimmering. I've been out there with my grandkids, and we had sea foam, snowball fights, and it's a heck of an amenity to have that kind of connectivity to the water. I don't need another parking lot. And then right across the street from Parish Park on Gator Trail is another paved parking lot. It's on federal land. There's a third parking lot under construction on Merritt Island Refuge Center. And if you're interested in going over the cross-sections, I'll be happy to simplify them to you to where you can look at it and see what's actually going to get built.
Next card, please.
Do you all mind if I take this off?
Oh, please do.
Okay. Thank you. Do I need to state my name and address for the record?
Please.
Katrina Shaddix, 1133 Covington Street, Oviedo. And thank you for allowing us to speak. This is my first time at Titusville. I usually speak at all the Seminole County Commission meetings. But we were at a March for Manatees and Clean Water this past Sunday, and I was informed about this project, so I wanted to come and give some input on it. But I'm actually speaking for a Titusville resident who couldn't be here tonight. His name is Jeff Luce, and he happens to be a former United Air Force veteran. And he also, interestingly enough, was just recently retired from the FWC as a law enforcement officer, specifically Marine Patrol. And specifically, he monitored that, this specific area where we're talking about, and Play Linda Beach. So he has many, many years of experience, and I think his input and his opinion on this project should be considered very seriously. So like I said, he's an Air Force veteran, retired law enforcement, Marine Patrol Division. Officer Luce worked in this area for many years and said it's a logistical nightmare for law enforcement, especially on Saturdays and Sundays during the summer. He witnessed years of environmental destruction, fishing, wildlife crimes, and shoreline erosion perpetrated by people, their motorized watercrafts, and drunken crowds. He witnessed firsthand the total collapse of Titusville's Indian River Lagoon ecosystem and is very much opposed to a seawall and a parking lot being constructed. As we all know, parking lots create more impervious surfaces that prevent natural water filtration processes. He would like this entire area sealed off from people and the shoreline permanently protected and restored with seagrass and made back into a functioning natural habitat for fishing wildlife. He did say, however, if you aren't blocking it off to people, he would like a ramp for non-motorized vehicles for the windsurfers and completely against the sea dews and the boats that go there. They cause way too much damage. Mr. Luce also met Laura Lee on Sunday and supports her comments and suggestions, and he's going to be working with me to bring the IRL back to life, which would not include building a seawall or a parking lot, because a seawall would impair and impede the growth of seagrass, which, as we all know, is a vital component to the healthy Indian River ecosystem. And I happen to be the executive director of Bear Warriors United. We work to protect wildlife, their habitat, waters, and natural lands. So I will probably be a more frequent presence here at your meetings, and I appreciate you giving me this chance to speak today and for Officer Luce. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, a 54-year resident of North Brevard in Titusville. I'm opposed to the variance request and believe the request does not comply with ordinance number 34-132.2. The application evidence thus far does not demonstrate a net benefit to the public, nor does the project provide public benefits which would exceed those that may be lost to the public. I have reviewed your packet, reviewed what was stated before the Board of Adjustment Appeals, and I think those things are important that clearly reflect that. Please remember, the burden of proof is upon the applicant, not those opposed. The current activities at Parish Park is illustrated in the signpost, which I, and I'm not going to list those, but you see them. Based upon the design of this application, most all of these activities will be severely impaired or eliminated, i.e. no net public benefit. As you may recall, I'm the individual that voted against creation of the public variance process, because I believe in the current integrity of the variance system, and rather than it become a political system, which obviously that's what it's becoming. In addition, you have a double standard. The variance board, you have to have four concurring votes. Here, you have the three concurring votes. Why is that? My children grew up here. They enjoyed windsurfing, sailboarding, and many other recreational activities there at Parish Park. In addition, do not destroy activities that young people like. That should be important to you. I'm a boater and have been for 50 years here in Titusville. Have unloaded my boat at the west end of the launch facility on many occasions. There is inadequate parking there, and I noticed, as reflected on page 75, they're going to take up some of the facilities on the east side of FWC for the trailhead. That is wrong, simply wrong. The photographs as shown here are a biased representation really of what's going on. See the beach I've provided to you as a clear photograph of what's occurring. The sandy beaches reflected on page 72 of your materials are very misleading. There's no funds available for beach restoration. They haven't even applied to do that. That's what was testified to and stated previously. I believe having a trailhead here is a direct assault upon many people's use of this park and should be denied. Thank you.
Okay. Next card, please.
Hi, Tom Abbott, 5205 Fishtail Palm Avenue, Cocoa, Florida. I'm an avid windsurfer and as such enjoy the ample number of places to park, the easy access to water, and a decent area to rig my sail that the park currently offers. From when I saw the proposed variance, those conditions which I take for granted will cease to exist. I'm also a conservationist and an amateur astronomer. The idea of eliminating the minimal tree requirement has me concerned. Replacing the sandy areas of the park, which somewhat reflect heat, to a dark asphalt surface heat, which will absorb heat, makes no sense to me, especially without the shade and cooling effects that trees have to offer. I do agree in somewhat that some of the larger canopy trees like oaks would more not in that compact, high-wind, and salty environment, but there are other trees besides shrubs like Simpson stopper. You can do sea grape, which I've seen work, red cedar, they would also work, and mangroves, which you see throughout the landscape when they're close to the water. Also, I along with members from my Astronomical Society frequently use the bio lab bolt punch area to observe the sky. As one of the darker areas in Brevard County, the skies are already polluted with light coming from Titusville, and if you go further west, all the way to Orlando. Adding additional illumination even closer to where we observe would just make things even worse. How much additional light generated may be minimal, but it still adds another sail to this astronomer's coffin. As I enter the city of Titusville from the south on US 1, I can't but help notice your beautiful sign, Titusville, Nature, History, Space. And I also read that your city's motto is Gateway to Nature and Space. I think if you take a really good look at my fellow windsurfer Kevin Rosa at L's proposal, you'll notice a more gradual transition from a cityscape to a wildlife refuge, a much more fitting gateway to nature and space. So I would just ask that you and your team of engineers and experts look at other options and alternatives before you allow this proposed variance to go through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Abbott. I also live at 5205 Fishtail Palm Avenue in Cocoa, Florida. I'm also an avid windsurfer. I live in Cocoa, so I usually windsurf at either Parish Park or the 520 Causeway. Both are about the same distance from my house. I do prefer Parish Park because there's plenty of parking, easy access to the shoreline, and it has a nice vibe. When I leave, I usually stop by some of your local stores, whether it be food from Pizza Ant, beer from ABC Liquors, or on those hot sunny days, ice cream from Cosmic Creamery. From my understanding of the proposed variance, the following will happen. I will have no grassy sail rigging areas. Instead, I'll have asphalt. I probably won't find a place to park, as spots will now be severely limited, and I will try to have to hurl my sail and board over a seawall just to get to the water. None of these are positives in my book. People come to Parish Park to feel the sand between their toes and to touch and interact in the water, not to be blocked by a seawall. So I ask you to please look at a viable alternative to this seawall and limited parking and not allow this variance to pass as it is. Thank you.
Next card, please.
Looks like Michael Stinson.
Hi, Michael Stinson, 2755 Timoca Avenue. I think it's probably safe to say that Parish Park is the most popular single park in all of Titusville. Thousands of people use this park on a semi-regular basis, hundreds at a time. If you go out there on any day when it's hot, people are off of work, people are out of school, it is packed to maximum capacity. People love this park. And if this is allowed to go forward, most of the reasons that people use this place will be null and void. They won't, they won't have a reason to go there at all. I also like the point that the, excuse me, sorry, that the gentleman made about light pollution. I like to go to the surrounding Gator Creek to look at meteor showers and other astronomical phenomenon, and I'm afraid that if we build lights throughout the park, the light pollution would choke all of that out. I guess the main point I'd like to make is that the greatest charm of Parish Park in the Greater National Wildlife Refuge is a lack of construction. It's natural beauty, it's natural, it's just nature, and construction in and of itself is a detriment to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Dorothy Andrews. Dorothy Andrews.
I see not.
It looks like Michelle. It looks like M.E. It's L.K.E. at the end.
Hi, Michelle Malkin. I live at 3984 Tangle Drive. I'm, I would like to point out that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals was actually enacted to help deal with variances, and on December 3, 2020, this exact issue was presented to them with all of the attachments and all of the information. An extension was granted at that time to present evidence, because the Board of Adjustments Appeals was not satisfied with what was presented to them. In the meantime, a new ordinance was created allowing the city council to actually hear this issue, which took the issue that was set before the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, specifically designed for handling variances, to put it before you. I find the timing of the new ordinance very questionable. I find the actual new ordinance very questionable, and it does not read as though it was thoughtfully written. Further, the applicant has stated that there's public interest, direct public benefit, a bona fide need, and an unnecessary hardship. While they've used the key terms required to meet the obligation that they have, they have not actually presented any supporting evidence to this whatsoever. I'd also like to enter into evidence the Board and Adjustment Appeals notes from the meeting on December 3, 2020. No environmental studies have been presented. No alternative solutions have been explained why they would not work or why that they've even been researched. They've merely stated that a hardship would be suffered if they were not granted this variance without actually stating what that hardship would be. They state that it would remain unimproved, which the natural state of the environment is unimproved, it's its natural state. The applicant is seeking the full 50-foot variance, not five feet, not 10 feet, but the full 50 feet. There is no actual evidence presented in any way, shape, or form backing their position, merely their opinions on what they want to happen. Appropriate research has not been done. The public has spoken tonight, and they did not testify to a public benefit, and that evidence is uncontroverted. These people, your public, your constituents, care about the project. They have done significant amount of research and arguably more so than the applicant has. They have presented viable alternatives, none of which have been refuted, and none of which are refuted by the packets submitted by the applicant. The net benefit of this project is simply not met. Therefore, you must deny this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Hello, I'm Elton Myra Korosky, 3151 Vince Road. I politely request my permission, your permission, to yield my portion of my time to Ms. Laura.
Yeah, well, freeze clock. Stop clock. And start clock.
Okay, Laura Ward again. So I'll try to finish up. Under criteria two, you can deny the variance by finding that the variance is not consistent with the intent of the overlay. That's the shoreline overlay. The city developed the overlay through public input, and the sole purpose of that overlay was to keep permanent built stuff away from the lagoon. The ordinance also addresses what uses cannot be in the overlay. Primary among those, the overlay prohibits parking facilities. The The overlay further prohibits the construction of new bulkheads. The project in and of itself is a massive bulkhead. I'm sure you all can understand that. It's a huge piece of construction right by the water. That's not permitted by your overlay. So the intent of the overlay ordinance is not consistent with this variance. See, number four of your criteria. It says that the project provides public benefits exceeding those lost to the public. Well, you just ask any of these people out here on a weekend, or even ask yourself, would you rather have a beach there or a parking lot? Once again, no evidence has been presented by the applicant to prove that the project provides public benefits exceeding those lost to the public. We've heard a lot tonight, oh, let me get this off, no wonder I'm having trouble. We've heard a lot tonight about what will, what happens on the beach when this is put into place. There's very little beach left, and Mr. Pettick had some engineered drawings showing the elevations, and you could see how close to the water this thing really is. They've just pretty much wiped out the beach, and it's replaced with what? A trailhead, like we've got a zillion trailheads. This is, this was a simple matter of somebody found some money, they got a grant,
Uh, we have gone through the cards, we had the, um, first presentation, now you guys can go follow up.
and they needed to figure out what to do with it. And they didn't spend a whole lot of time involving the public in what would be the proper use there.
Yes, thank you. So, once again, just bringing back the, also to the intent of City Code 34-31211,
Thank you very much. Next card.
Ann Johnston.
and that is to grant this project variances, whether operational or administrative, as a professional practice. The overall layout and design of the project is determined to serve a public purpose. We believe we have presented, uh, testimony, uh, before the public, asked the public, means we have passed this variance. We would like to address the arguments that the public has far as environmental issues and park. What variance can be granted without the microphones? What I said, this is what probably was submitted to the federal government for the grant. It don't look like that. How much does it look like that? Not at all. Where are we going with this? Where's the truth? Should I take Mr. Joe and send him a letter to the FPP before the border professional is here? By goodness, he said a set of plans that is absolutely different from what was submitted by the ringers. Same company, CPH. Do you hear what's going on? This is our project. Okay, so, uh, you know, I'm concerned about a number of things about this thing, but, but it's just, it's just not right. Uh, I, 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 Mr. Rosa hasn't finished with my kite surfing lessons yet, I got bad feet. And, uh, but I, I did, I've done some swimming out there, I swam to Spyder Island, paddle boarding to both the islands, both north and south, and, uh, uh, I've been here for over 50 years. So I think that, uh, uh, some of you ought to listen to what's going on. It used to be when I got here, they had even a, a waterski grant. I used to do all, I used to pull waterski, pull waterski. Apparently it's a stuff like that. Anyhow, this is, is what Mr. Seater said to me. He says, it does not add to our, um, what did he say? He said a lot of things. Well, it doesn't add to what was said. Laws of public, uh, use, uh, of what we're gonna, what we're gonna do, but it doesn't make sense. So I'm asking you to, uh, just, 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 it is our project, it is our project. Thank you.
Next card, please.
The last card is, um, isn't here.
All right, that was the last card. Yeah, okay, but, um, let's take a ten minute recess, and then you guys can do your last thing. So we'll be back here five, Phil, thank you.
We have gone through the cards. We had the first presentation. Now, you guys can go follow up with everybody.
Yes, thank you. So, once again, just bringing back also to the intent of City Code thirty-four dash three-one-two-zero-one. And that is to grant projects' variances within operational areas of this strain and best professional practices. The overall layout and design of the project is determined to serve a public purpose. If we believe we have presented testimony before the public ask for public purposes, we would like to address the arguments and requirements from the public as far as environmental issues and habitat. What variance in the project will allow us to do and serve the environment as well as to run off of issue or storm water. And to make sure that it's a good plan.
Name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Amy Daley. I'm the Vice President of Red River Environmental Services in C V H County. I have been consulting for twenty-seven years and seventeen of those have been in C V H County. I'd like to take you through the onset of the project, the dirt conceptual plan in C V H County. We met with Saint John's Triple Water Banister District on site on October third, two thousand and nineteen. Then, we met with W C on October nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Before we met them, we located all the sensitive environmental areas within the project area. And at that point, we addressed these concerns with both F W C and Saint John's Triple Water Banister District upfront and clear so everyone understood what the county wanted to do. The upper areas were proposed for improvements only to avoid these sensitive environmental areas. The design for the project to serve the county, the county's citizens while meeting regulatory requirements and improving the environment. And to prevent further erosion of the water, while protecting the water resource and the horseshoe crab habitat. We have been communicating with Saint John's and with W C, and from an email that was submitted on the record, which we have with W C, which was sent in two thousand. Two thousand and fourteen, an email from the Estable City Experts concurring that the project, as we quote, "does meet their concerns regarding the horseshoe crab." Someone mentioned in public comment that this doesn't meet public needs. That's not really true. As you go forward to regulatory criteria, there is a specific public interest in this that you have to meet in order to meet the criteria. Please honor the sign, see back to the regulatory, we have them as criteria. It improves the water quality of the last water body by providing storm water improvements. The project will reduce erosion and provide public health and safety and welfare by providing a safe recreational fitness environment. We're not proposing impacts to the jurisdiction area. And we are avoiding responding habitat for the horseshoe crab. The county and C V H County are continuing to work with regulatory agencies to address the public criteria while proposing improvements away from sensitive environmental areas in the initial line and help serve the state future as a public community. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? Vice Mayor Nelson?
Please. No, no question. Um, one of the things that is concerning all of our public, and I understand that many of us are concerned about this. But it's been a lot of concern, a lot of people's concerns.
Well, beyond the habitats, we are proposing a vegetated buffer. That buffer.
The, I think that's a lot of, well, I think there's, I'm hearing a couple different concerns. One is environment, two is beach access. I had looked at the plans and assumed that what I'm seeing is a sidewalk and then a natural beach going out. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but that's, that was what I was seeing. So, I, I think that that would help, help allay some of my concerns and probably some other people's concerns.
Beyond the bollards is the natural, well, it will be a vegetated buffer consisting of sod and cord grass. And then beyond that, there will be a sandy beach area. The public will be able to walk through the bollards and access the beach as they do now.
Okay. But the bollards would keep the vehicles, the four-wheelers from...
That is correct. It would prevent vehicles, trailers, disturbance within the shoreline area and out of actually the most critical part of the habitat for the horseshoe crab, which is the shoreline.
Okay. Am I asking another question just way off the wall? Sorry.
Sure.
My concern with the beaches, I've lived here all my life and I've seen that shoreline, it rode, it rode, it rode. The south shoreline even more than the north shoreline. Have you looked at or are you aware of ways that we can increase that beach area?
On the south side?
Well, either north or south.
Well, I know that the D O T was looking into doing some improvements on the south side. But as far as the north side shore improvements, we have not addressed anything beyond our project limits. But there could be something quite possibly in the future.
Okay. I know that was way off. Sorry about that.
Don't go anywhere because you are the one now. Member Robinson?
Yes, just for, out of all of the activities that has been stated, windsurfing and so forth, how many of those would be, do you feel would be eliminated with this, if this project go forward?
That is not my area of expertise, but I do believe that everybody will have access to the beach area.
You feel that all of the activities that are going there with the exception of maybe one or two will continue?
Right, except for the launching of boats directly into, or jet skis into the water from the shore.
Okay.
Member Jordan?
Let me make sure I understand. You say it's not your area of expertise, but what I'm hearing from the public is the fact that they enjoy this area. The project that you have in place right now, you've answered the three questions that you are asking us to allow the variance for. I can get the tree thing, that, that just makes no sense to me to, you know, sometimes you have to have a variance because I had a project where the city wanted me to put shrubs in my industrial area way back from anybody. That doesn't make any sense at all. So, that's why you go and ask for variances. A simple question. If we, if you weren't here requiring the variances right now, what would the next step be? Where would you be?
That would be a question for the county.
Okay. Can you answer that question?
So, if we didn't require the, if we didn't need these variances, we would, we would just be essentially moving through permitting through the city. I understand in that way, we wouldn't even have to come to any board to request.
And that is really my, my point here. What you're doing is trying to go within our process, make sure that you do the things that we need you to do. But there are some requirements that we have that you can't meet because of the way the project is.
I couldn't say it better.
Well, that's what I'm understanding. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear there. And hopefully you can answer the question. It, it's kind of interesting to me because if you look at those who have jet skis, I think they go directly opposite of those who have the catamarans, the non-motorized thing. And then you have people who, and I think both enjoy the environment, but for sure, some of the pictures that we saw, we saw trucks that was going all the way into the shoreline, which means some of those trucks are leaking oil, some of those trucks are, you know, they're contaminating the, the area. So, as far as making sure that the public is protected and the public is safe, then you have this new design that you have here. But the questions still have to be begged. The activities that the people are enjoying now, can you say that they can still do those activities? They may have to do a different ingress or egress a different way, but are they able to continue to enjoy the beach line as they do today?
In my understanding is they will except for perhaps the jet skis. That's, they'll, they'll have to launch at Parish Park itself.
So...
So, it would be the jet skis. The other, and you'll hear from my next witness is that there will still be, the, the sandy beach will be preserved. We still have the, the green area, the grass area, and then you have the bollards is what I understand. But we can, we can go into more detail. But so, for the most part, all the activities were taken into consideration, that definitely the kiteboarding, those individual activities were taken into consideration. Now, all they'll have to do is, they'll have to go through the bollards to get to the beachy area in order to enjoy the activities. And that is also, the fact as Ms. Daley testified to, is that what we're doing in this project is to preserve that, that water wet sand area where you have like the horseshoe crabs and the, and the environmental concerns. Our project is actually not in that area. It's actually up from that area. So, we're not, we're actually helping preserve that environmental concern for those horseshoe crabs because now we're going to prevent, as you said, that vehicular traffic that would currently, as we saw from the photos, actually goes over that wet area beach where the horseshoe crabs apparently spawn and breed and the like.
So, that was interesting that you gave us a letter for, from F W C about the horseshoe crab. So, to me, that's, that's pretty telling that F W C thinks this is a good project for the horseshoe crabs. And they are experts in fish and wildlife. So, the only thing I hadn't heard you say about the catamarans, whether you still be able to do that. So, if you're going to do that presentation or say something.
Can you come, if you just state your name for the record or come to us, please?
Tim Laurie. Lived thirty-six sixty Weber Road, Valkyria, Florida. Anything that is offloaded from a trailer would not have access to that area. So, if you can pick it up as a kayak canoe and you can physically pick it up and go to, or windsurfing and you can walk to the water's edge across the beach, that is accessible, but trailer wise, no.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh.
Can I?
Vice Mayor has a question.
Don't go anywhere.
You might be the guy that knows these answers now.
You might. So, is there a way that we could modify the plans to allow the catamarans and those kind of non-motorized vehicles to launch in that area?
You run into two scenarios. The ones that they are going to use trailers. If you do give them access to it, they're going to use their vehicles and back up the jet skis. So, it's something that you would have to try to patrol. The other part of it is, is the grant that we acquired is for non-motorized vehicles. So, I understand a catamaran, but the biggest part would be the policing of it to try to keep them from using it.
Okay. So, it's potential, potential, but I'm quite there.
Are you back up? Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, in a second. I'm going.
Member Jordan?
Just for clarity, the catamarans can use the boat dock, boat slip, or whatever you call those things to get in there.
I don't have the answer to that.
Sounds like an out.
Everybody's in there. Okay, thank you.
All right, one more time. I'm, I'm, I'm listening and taking this all in and took that all in. The big concern I hear is the loss of the recreational and certainly environmental. But I would also say, well, let me digress. So, of the things we've heard, we, we can't do catamaran because, and I got that answer over there. But then again, you can't do catamaran in Fort Pierce either by the picture I saw. You, didn't I just ask that question when I held the picture up and say you can't do that there either?
Yeah, well, the bollards, you just have to have a slot.
Okay. Right, you gotta have a slot. Okay, so you can't just hit the water. So, all right, I got you. What can they do normal? Because we keep hearing we're going to lose all this stuff. I, I need to know they're not going to lose all that stuff. I don't think we're doing this because we don't want anybody to do recreational things anymore.
Right.
So, that's your job to tell me.
Besides, like I said, this, a trailer accessing water, canoes, kayaks, this grant is one that is a federal lands access program is what the grant was for. It was designed for both pedestrians, so you have the pedestrian walk and the bike paths is what they're calling it. You also have the access by waterways to the Marid Island Wildlife Refuge. So, that's what we qualified for under the grant. So, it is designed for water crafts like canoes and kayaks who access the water and then go explore the wetlands.
What about the windsurfing?
I don't, personally, I don't know what they, if they can pick it up and they can get it to the water, then yes, they would have access for that.
How many R O S Ds?
All right. All right, look, he, you guys did that part, he's going to do this part. Yeah, because clearly what I'm trying to get at here on your behest is that we don't lose all our recreational stuff. On the flip side, and this kind of my own personal story is having lived here since nineteen sixty-five, I remember going out to the beach when it was a dirt road. And I remember there being no crossovers and walking on the sand and before I had sandals, I'm stepping on sandspurs everywhere. You all did if you were here. And then when they started to modify it, there were concerns. It's not the same. We're taking away the rustic look and all that. You may even remember where they had that little concession stand at the corner. Now, you got to get old to do that, Dwight, you got to remember that with me. But anyway, that being said, this reminds me of that, you know, all these changes and we're taking away our nature and this and that. What I don't want to see happen is lose your recreational stuff. But I also want to say that the number of times that I've talked to some of you about this and you agreed, there's a disorganization over there. There really is no parking place. They just go where they want, first come, first served. And if you're not there in time or if you're not left early enough, you might get caught in one of those trucks spinning out. And I've seen that more than once and it's like, that can't be good for the, the environment. That can't be good for the horseshoe crabs. So, I'm kind of glad to see the organization of it. And I want to make sure we don't lose all the recreational aspect of it. So, with that said, I see no more questions. I guess we go. Nope, never mind, we got another one.
I'm sorry. So, am I understanding this right? If we have fewer bollards or have an area where you can get between the bollards, you can actually do some of these recreational activities? Did I hear that right?
No, right now, as it is, if they can pick their water craft, whatever they're doing, whether it's wind sailing or windsurfing or, and they can physically walk to the water's edge, they're, they can get between the bollards as it is now. The only one I said was the catamarans. If it takes a vehicle to offload it to back down to the shoreline, then I would say you cannot do that.
But then that brings back the problem with the jet skis.
Right.
And erosion from that.
Because they're going to use it and they're going to access the same area.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Member Robinson?
Yes, yes, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just a country fellow. How many parking spots are there going to be? Because I see the different conditions, but how many are there going to be?
It's got seventy-eight including twelve.
How many?
Seventy-eight including twelve ADA.
Okay. And if a, this is another question. If a person came down there with their, their motor scooter, how far would they have to carry it under this new condition?
What's it?
How, how, you know, you said they can get it down to the...
Oh, you're saying a kayak or canoe?
Kayak, kayak. How far would, would it have to go? How much would that change now?
It varies. The shoreline varies depending on what, at what point you try to access it.
Well, you got the blockers there, you got, you got the barriers there. I mean, I'm just wanting to see how convenient it's going to be versus the way it is now when this new thing is going to be.
Right, and I understand that. And I'm not sure whether they...
You understand what I'm talking about.
Whether they get right back down to the shoreline or what.
You understand what I'm talking about, yeah.
It, it's going to vary depending on what place in the park that they access it from. Because it's not a...
And the maximum is going to be if I'm late and everybody else is all crowded in.
Well, there's an offloading, there's an offloading area for kayaks and canoes wherever they can pull their vehicle over, offload it, and then they can park their vehicle and then they can access it. But Joe, do you have a, of idea?
We're talking roughly the amount of distance you'd have to carry from, let's say, the parking stall to the beach.
Right.
I assume this microphone is on?
Maybe it is.
Okay. So, if you were to carry, if you were to walk from the parking, back of the parking stall to the beach, to get to the water's edge from the back of the parking stall, at nearest, we're talking about forty feet. So, that would be across the drive aisle, over the sidewalk, past the bollards, and then down to the water's edge.
Member Jordan?
Thought you were going somewhere, didn't you?
I said, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'm sitting here thanking because we all want to make sure we do the right things. We're, we're here to represent the citizens and they're here to tell us that we need to be smart and all this good stuff. We are smart, I will tell you. You may not like our answer, but that's just the way it is. The bottom line to me is, you know, we've had a lot of people get up here and talk about the environment. And your project is taking care of the environment. On the other side, there are people who like recreation, and even though they say they like environment, they're putting jet skis out in the water, backing their trucks up. environment, they're putting jet skis out in the water, backing their trucks up, or the truck is leaking oil and everything and they're hurting the environment. So we're protecting the environment by putting this project in place and we have to, we as council have to remember that this is a variance hearing about basically three different things. And we need to stay focused on that and decide if the variance is an acceptable way to go in order for this project to go. The mayor actually stated in the beginning, this is all about variance, it's nothing about this project. This project is Brevard County's project. We have nothing to do with it, even though one person said, no, it's Titusville, it's Titusville. Yeah, we are the one that utilized the saying, we do not maintain it. The county maintains the same once it's, it's building and everything. And in my mind, the variances that they are asking for are extremely reasonable and I keep jumping on the trees. The tree is just, to me, it just makes no sense at all because you really, the only thing you can put up there is probably palm trees, you know, and that's not shade at all. And it's according to what kind of palm trees you put up there. It just makes sense when you look at what you're trying to put there in the variance that you're asking for, you're doing the minimum that is required in order to put this in place. So I'm not sure how far we're supposed to go with this since this is our first time doing something like this, but I'd certainly like for us to call the question or something and go from here and, and decide and see what the council wants to do.
City Attorney?
They're still on rebuttal. It would not be appropriate until they finish their rebuttal.
Yeah, we have.
We'll close the public hearing for discussion.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
And I think before we get to that question, we need to make sure that we have all our questions answered and they may not relate strictly to the variance, but I think our community is going to feel a lot happier if we at least give them some of those answers. I'll feel happier.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just want us to make sure that we stay within the boundaries of a quasi-judicial. And I hear what you're saying because I, I'm with you with that, but I also want us to make sure, because there happened to be a court reporter here and I don't want them to be pushing back on us because we didn't follow our protocol. So that's where I am.
Okay, I think we have to keep it in the back of our heads, but I think it would be, it's awful helpful to have the questions answered.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not going to call any questions until we, you know, they're completely done with the rebuttal and then I'll make sure that that's the case. And yes, clearly, this is quasi-judicial and it's a variance and we have certain things we have to follow. As a matter of fact, if we vote no, we need to state why we voted no and it's got to be a legal aspect. So anybody else for this young man who says, can I leave now? Okay, you're good, thank you. Next up.
Yes, at this time, we would like to call the former Commissioner Robin Fisher.
Name and address for the record, please.
Robin Fisher, sixteen twenty-five Gordon Street, Titusville, Florida. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I know you were laughing when Pete said that he saw me walking. You won't think like I, I do any walking at all, right?
Ah, that is making points.
I just want to really come and apologize to you because if I probably done a better job at my job when I was former county commissioner, you wouldn't be seeing this today. You know, as a commissioner during the oh-seven, oh-eight, oh-nine timeframe, we actually ran out of dollars and we couldn't fund all the projects that in two thousand, in two thousand and six, the voters put a referendum in front of the people of Titusville. And there was a community that came together and identified a lot of different projects that they thought that was important. And when they came, these committees identified this project as one of those projects that needed to be funded. And actually, they went to the voting box and voted to tax herself to fund this project. And so I'm here to apologize because we didn't have the funds to do it at the time. And so it got passed on year after year after year. And one of the problems sometimes as elected officials, you know, we, people get mad at us because we don't do what we say we're going to do. Well, in this case, actually, we had told the voters that we were going to make some causeway improvement and they never were done. So although I'm proud of some of the things we did as a commissioner, those, that's one of the things that I didn't get done. And if I had gotten that done, you wouldn't be here dealing with this tonight. So I apologize to you, but I want you to remember the history that in two thousand, two thousand and six, there was a referendum put together that went to the voting box and asked the voters to agree to tax herself to make improvements to this causeway. And a lot of people in this room, I won't say a lot, but there's several people in this room, was on those committees and those, and that project had paving in it, it had parking in it, and it had causeway improvements. And so I hope when you make your decision tonight that you will think about that because it's not the city's project, it's not Commissioner Pritchett's project, it's not the county's project, it's the voters' project. Thank you.
Next up.
Yes, I'd like to call Commissioner Reader Pritchett.
He's always a tough act to follow.
He is.
But I got to say, he, he said all that, but not all of that was really true because he did leave a grant on the table, which as soon as I came into office, the three-point, the two-point-five million came up to apply to this project. So thank you, Robin Fisher. I have been doing my best not to mess up all the things that he had started. And he says so far, I'm doing a pretty good job, so thank you for that. When we got the funds, you know, we, we wanted to finish up this, this project. Actually, we had the old plans that Mr. Honeycutt had designed, so that was something that we used to start with. I called in Ms. Laura Lee and she brought Mr. Klein with them because we wanted to do a project. And again, it's just changed a bit over the time period. But the main objective was, when we talked, was to protect the horseshoe crabs, to really watch over the Indian River Lagoon and to provide an ability for the public to still enjoy the park. So on the lagoon, we talked about the horseshoe, that's, we're, we're pretty blessed that the Fish and Wildlife people said this was a good project for the horseshoe crabs. We're collecting forty-seven million dollars a year for the lagoon. I take the lagoon really serious. And right now, what we have is the cars are parked on the dirt, all the oil ports in, the gas from the motorized vehicles, and that's all going right into the Indian River Lagoon. So when we talked about this, we thought how important it was to get the cars off the beach, back them up and put them on a place where this could be treated. So when they're parked back here on the, on the asphalt park, that's going to, all that water runoff is going to go into an area that's going to be stored and it'll be treated before it runs into the lagoon, which is extremely important to me since we're spending forty-seven million dollars a year trying to improve the lagoon and the horseshoe crabs. Public purpose, I think that's a big public purpose. I think the public voted to tax themselves that kind of money because it was important to them. So I think the lagoon, as far as projects, is important and you can ask Ms. Virginia, I hound her all the time to get our fair share up here of the lagoon funds. So I'm, I'm always fighting to get more lagoon funds up here to take care of our lagoon. The county commission does take this very serious, I do. So this isn't something that we blew through. And again, there's still some things that got to be tweaked. Every single thing we do, it's important, excuse me, mask kind of catch up a little, that is always underneath all of the guidelines that we have to do by all the agencies. We're going to have to run through Fish and Wildlife, St. John's, Army Corps of Engineers. It's so important that we meet all of these things and we will. And again, I know I'm getting off topic because you're voting on variance, but I thought you really needed to know how important this project is and what a good project it is. Is it going to reduce some of the parking up there? Yeah. Right now, it's the biggest parking lot I've ever seen on a sand. And you know what? If you're going to do the variance on this, we're already violating the variance because we've turned it into a parking lot that's all over the water, you know? So there is some things we have to do. We have to make some changes and it's not going to be perfect for everybody that's using it right now, but it really is a good project and there's still going to be some tweaks we have to do. Thank you so much for all you guys and all you do and you really do need a race.
Thank you. Next up.
I, I have no further witnesses. I would just like to close very briefly if that's possible.
Thank you.
And once again, as the testimony we've heard and the evidence that the county's put forward are the witnesses that I have presented, Mr. LaFaso, we've heard from the commissioners, these are, Ms. Daly, those are the, the witnesses and that's the testimony and evidence. And it's this council, this body, that has to evaluate these requested variances based upon your city code. And we do believe we have a bona fide need and we've shown that, that these variances are necessary in order for our project to move forward. As was brought out earlier, this project, if it didn't require these variances, probably would not be before you. It would be essentially something we would just go to city permitting and it'd be completed. But it's because of these, unique application of this code would basically frustrate the county's ability to really make any improvements on the property, specifically the fifty-foot shoreline protection setback and the twenty-foot landscape, landscape buffer as well, would basically prevent us from constructing anything at this site because of the unique nature. And that's where you have, when you have this consideration, under your code section thirty-four dash three-one-two point two, you have to consider the fact of whether we've demonstrated a bona fide need based upon the fact that literal application of the, or enforcement of this regulation would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. We believe we've met these requirements. We definitely believe we've met the requirement that this serves a public benefit, that this is a public purpose project under your code. That is for your evaluation. I know there's been a lot of emotional testimony from members of the public, but that is ultimately your decision whether this is a public purpose project under your city code. And we believe based upon all the testimony and the evidence and the diagrams that have been submitted to you, that we have shown that these three variances are necessary, that we would have undue hardship, that's not a result of the county, it's the fact that this property is so uniquely shaped and sized and applying these code provisions would just literally result in, in an unbuildable piece of property. So based upon that, we do request these three variances, we request your granting these three variances so that we can move forward with this project, which we believe will benefit the environment. As we've discussed about the stormwater drain runoff will be being captured and drained. We have the environmental concerns for the horseshoe crabs, which FWC has already, through their email, indicated their concerns have been alleviated. They are actually fully addressed according to their email. So this, this project will benefit ultimately Titusville and any of the park patrons based upon the improvements that will go on, go on to the property. So we would request respectfully that you grant these three variances for the county. Thank you.
Counsel. Ooh, got it up. Member Jordan.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Hold on your motion, please. Member Stokel.
Thanks. Most of my stuff that I had concerns about has been answered. The one thing I do want further clarification on, it was mentioned several times that the plans that were presented in the PowerPoint are not actually what's being presented. Can you just clarify that, please?
Yes, that is, I believe, a mischaracterization. The plans that are being presented are in fact an accurate depiction of what has always been presented for this. And in fact, I can enter into evidence, if it pleased the council, the original concepts that were shown at the public meeting that show exactly what these plans show on the beach, the proposed, or on the park, the proposed improvements were always a single one-way drive aisle with parking stalls adjacent, and then there was a side parking lot. That has always been the plan, that is the plan now, that was the plan from the beginning. So I, I do not know where this is coming from, that any of this misrepresents that in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Vice, no, excuse me, Member Jordan. Oh, you're holding on.
You told me to hold.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
I, I do have two sort of additional questions. I'd sort of like to hear from Virginia, if that's okay, regarding the environmental impacts. So, sorry to put you on the spot, but I was concerned, I was concerned about the runoff, the stormwater, how that's going to be handled. Any information you have that you think might help us make a decision?
So the, the current situation is that the, there is no stormwater treatment. The stormwater, the rain that's falling on the parkway, on the pavement, the asphalt of the parkway is running across that asphalt, picking up the pollution from our cars, driving across, you know, picking up whatever leaky fluids have fallen out of our cars. And it's carrying that across the sandy shoreline now where it's picking up whatever additional pollution is there from the recreational uses. Depending on how fast that water is flowing, it's contributing to erosion problems along that shoreline and then entering the lagoon. The proposed project will capture not just the stormwater from the parkway, but also the stormwater from the proposed improvements. And it will capture the first two and a half inches. So the majority of our rainfall falls in bits that are much smaller than two and a half inches, so that will capture most of the storm events from any given year. Capture that and infiltrate it into the groundwater. That will prevent it from running off, it'll prevent it from picking up more pollution and carrying it to the lagoon. And it will decrease the velocity of that water running across the surface, eroding the shoreline and putting more sediment in the lagoon.
That was something that just has always concerned me is erosion on that shoreline. And over my lifetime, I've seen that, that split of land just sort of narrow and narrow and narrow. Other than this, well, let me ask you, will this basically prevent that erosion? At some point, will we need to take other action?
You still have all of the wave and wind-based erosion and so the, every time the, the wind blows and that chop creates on the lagoon, that is eating away at the, the land-water interface as well. So this project won't have any impact on, on that source of erosion. You had asked previously about the southern shoreline.
Right.
And the county has been working with tourist development, lagoon plus tourism grant funds to design an offshore wave break for the south shoreline of the causeway to, yeah, put in a, an offshore breakwater that would dissipate the wave energy and protect that shoreline for the horseshoe crabs and recreational use.
And build that one back up. Is there any plans to build the north shore up?
There are not current plans, but there have been a number of conversations about the need to do that. So, you know, what we've experienced with DOT is that when their roadway, when they perceive their roadway to be at risk, they harden the shoreline. And so left to their own devices, I think we would all expect that, that's what would happen. So by having these county improvements here, there's incentive to protect those county improvements with a sandy shoreline and work with the city to maintain that recreational amenity that the public so enjoys. And so, you know, I think this, and I don't want to get too out of, out of my place, but it provides an incentive for the county to work on a long-term plan for maintaining a sandy shoreline.
Okay. I think we probably ought to have you say your name and.
Oh. Virginia Barker with Brevard County, the Director of the Natural Resources Management Office.
Thank you.
Thank you. In case we don't know, the speaker before her was Commissioner Pritchett. I don't think she said her name either. Okay, thank you. On, on my side of things, again, to summarize my, my big concerns, and again, this isn't necessarily how I get to determine a vote because the quasi-judicial and what we're voting on is, is not necessarily this encompassing. But the environment obviously is very important to all of us. I have, and I feel like what I'm seeing, the letter that I saw, the speaker just now spoke about that we have no stormwater prevention at all right now and it's rolling off the road into the river. And if they can improve that, that's a benefit. So environment, recreation, that's huge. There's a passion out there for recreation and some of these can be taken care of, it appears, and some of them is going to, the bigger motorized boats, et cetera, or anything motorized, I guess, is an issue and you probably have to go over, I'm not sure, where would they launch? They can still. Okay, well, won't be as perfect, but recreation. And then the one thing that keeps coming up we haven't really talked about is the communication. Just curious, how many of you in here, over here, were at any one of the meetings that talk? talked about this? I think I remember you out at the park. Okay, so do I again, how many? About four or five? How many were not at any of them? Some of y'all don't want me to know. Okay. All right, I, I would just say, and I'm not going to say, um, whose fault that is. I'm going to say that with our meetings, uh, they're advertised, there could be people tomorrow that will say they're mad they didn't know about this meeting. Well, we advertise it the best we possibly can. Um, but what I'm getting at is, I would like to think that there could still be communication, whatever direction this goes. Um, but, uh, I have had several people say to me, um, certainly before this all came up, something's got to be done out there. Um, one of my most recent conversations with, uh, somebody who's opposed to all of this said, "Something's got to be done, they just don't want this." So when I look at it, again, driving by that area for many, many years, heck, I think, uh, I think the parish house, it was out there at one point, then it burnt down. Dunn House, Dummit House, Dummit Castle.
Yeah.
And it burnt down. Um, so that's long before jet skis, so we didn't see any of that. But the point I'm making is, there, there are, and you guys mentioned it to some degree, you know, there are trucks out there that are, um, doing circles, and that's not good for erosion, that's not good for horseshoe crabs. So I'd like to see that a little order comes to it, et cetera, but at the same time, I don't want to see lose recreation, I know how that is. So, uh, but communication, um, we can all do better there. Uh, Member Jordan?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve variance number 1-2021 Parish Park with the condition that ground cover be provided in place of sod around the trees at the parking lot's entrance drive of the westernmost parking area.
Members Stokel?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
unanimous. I guess I would say, again, to conclude, would be the communication factor, and, and that's a two-way street. Um, I think that every, they're working on the environment, they're working on recreation, and, and it benefits our area. With that, I'm going to take a second five-minute break, we'll come back together at 10 till.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, we are now back to Agenda Item 6A, which is to authorize the absences of regular member Joyous Parish on 20, or 17 February, 3 March, and 17 March, and approve a leave of absence for Ms. Parish from the Planning and Zoning Commission from now until the end of April 2021 for personal reasons. As provided in the city code section 2-53, City Council may authorize a member to miss more than three consecutive regular meetings, or more than 50% of regular or special or workshop meetings during a six-month period. Joyous Parish, regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, has indicated a desire for the City Council to authorize her recent absences, and approve a leave of absence from the Planning and Zoning Commission from now until the end of April 2021 for personal reasons. On 17 March 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this matter, a memo from the, uh, Commission's Chairman is in your counsel packet.
Counsel, any comments on that?
Um, only that I would suggest that we approve her absences. I know she's had some medical problems, I don't know if you guys remember, um...
I just want to point out that there are cards, I'm sorry. I just want to point out there are cards.
I'm, I'm getting there.
She, uh, came, came before us a couple of times, um, with different devices. I think she had a cane one time, strap around her waist, back brace.
I, I do recall.
Yeah.
Any other comments from Counsel? Both cards?
We have two cards, um, Stan Johnston and Dwight Severs.
Name for the record, like we...
Yes. Dwight Severs, for the record, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm primarily here to, one, answer any questions, I want to make a couple of comments, just to fill in a few details. With regard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, unanimously recommended that you request that you do approve this leave of absence, ending, excused absences. Number two, prior to the February 17th meeting, the City Attorney's Office and myself were notified that Ms. Parish was planning on being at our meeting, however, had to go out of town quickly for a personal, uh, health, uh, reason. And so she did tell us in advance, and so we knew that. With regard to the second meeting, I'm not sure what transpired, but with regard to the March 17th, prior to the March 17th, I received a email from her on March the 11th, prior to the third meeting, uh, explaining the situation and her asking for a leave of absence, uh, because of personal reasons. I attached her written request, staff felt as though that shouldn't be a part of the record as such, but I just want you to know, she asked in advance of the March 17th meeting and did not miss, she did, yes, miss three meetings in a row, but she certainly made it clear, and she would like to serve. And we on the Commission would like her to be able to continue to serve. And you have a, a board with excellent alternate members who are there, attending, so, uh, we will still have a full board no matter what.
Thank you for that update.
Sure.
Any other cards? Thank you very much, go, uh, we'll have a motion.
I'd move to approve the absences of regular member Joyous Parish for February 17th, March 3rd, and March 17th, and approve a leave of absence to Ms. Parish from Planning and Zoning Commission until the end of April.
Motion?
Second.
Uh, Member Jordan was the second. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson? Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. That moves us to petitions and requests from public, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Doug Kennedy, 1103 Garden Street, Titusville. I'm the, uh, business owner of Bubba Shrimp Company that owns the building over there. Um, we have a dispute going on with code enforcement. I would just like to put in the record that the, uh, the lawsuit and the other thing, go and make the council aware of it. Should I approach the clerk?
Yes, sir.
Read one statement of what I just gave the clerk, which will clarify the certification. The body of text is set forth in 14-foot, 14-point type with 32 points between baseline. The word counter reported 2,389 words, consisting of 14,424 characters spread over 279 lines. This is no problem. I also have, uh, had problems getting some certification from the city clerk. I have a permit that was issued to the business there, I'm asking my elected officials to please get this certified, and I would also like a copy of the application for the permit. Since I'm the owner of the property and the application doesn't show me, I'd like to know how he got a permit. He was a contractor. So I'd like to approach the clerk.
Just please, thank you for asking.
Rather than, I also made a copy, I would like the clerk to give one to each of the councils so you could do some reading. My intention here is to tell you, I think code enforcement is not operating in the way you think it is. I ask you to look into this, look at the tapes, go the other. Uh, don't need to go into everything, but there is other businesses, uh, I was charged with an ordinance you don't have, fined $50 a day, and at the last minute, because the property I was foreclosing, they decided to attach my corporation to the code enforcement thing. they decided to attach my corporation to the code enforcement thing, which unfortunately, I am in the commercial fishing business. I had a sale of $2.2 million worth of boats and assets, and because the lien they put on the property I own on Garden Street, the bank would not finance the guy's deal, and he backed out. So I would like to correct the situation. My intent is to say, I think there's a problem. You need to be aware of it. Go forward. I'm not here trying to get money, go the other. They fined me $50 a day and went to thing, which they're asking for costs to settle. I think they realize they're wrong, but it needs to be addressed. There is other businesses that face the same thing I have. I'm not the only business in town. They've done this a seven or eight. In truth of foreclosure, I had put the city on notice five months ago, notice of claim for extortion, tort, and defamation of character. They have fulfilled that wish, so if I may...
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you very much. And thank you for presenting to us and the manner with which you did it. Thank you. Petitions, requests, next.
Stan Johnston, Registered Professional Engineer. And I'm here tonight to, I've already sent you written comments about this meeting. And I'm concerned about some honesty that's going on here. And in this case is that, for example, here's a sign that's my signature, December 22. And then it says on here, it says, it says, "Failure to contain this sewage waste from contaminating the Indian River, although some sewage is diverted by an arid plumbing to live station, the majority of affluent thousands of gallons of water plus sewage continues today to flow to the Indian River by way of a culvert on US 1 located at northwest corner of Masonic Lodge, as I showed today at 1:00 PM, to city's field operations." This is December 22. Now, what I understand is that that water continued to flow to Space View Park and was never contained. It just flowed to Space View Park, then flowed to a manhole, and then flowed to the river. Space View Park is not retention pond at all. It flowed through the river, flowed through the pond. So what I'm saying, or what this is saying is that the city knew about it all along. And I've got it in writing here. It dated in the sign, and it continued flowing till I was watching it and other people watching, and the city was watching until January 1. And then the city went ahead and they finally put a containment berm there. Finally put a containment berm from preventing the sewage from continuing to flow into Space View Park. When did they do that? February 18. I saw them do it. I have, the police saw them do it. They know they did it. I wrote it up. I contacted the city. I took a picture of it. February 18. So what I'm saying is that all this that was said on January 12 of this special council meeting by our city manager and our mayor, it wasn't truthful. We had sewage. And by the way, I've got photos, I've got videos. I've got all kinds of witnesses and so forth that says it wasn't contained. But the city continues to go. I mean, this guy continues, our city manager continues to lie. And Mr. Diesel, you haven't admitted it. But I tell you what, we've got an admission now from who? Sean Stauffer. We got it in writing. I sent it to you. So it doesn't matter what the truth, okay? Two more minutes?
No, sir.
Probably not.
See nobody. Time's up. Thank you. Any other petitions or requests? I see none. City manager?
Yes, sir. In council, we're on consent agenda. Does any council members want to pull any of the consent agenda items?
There aren't many.
Clerk, are there any cards for consent agenda?
We have one card for all items.
And Mayor, with your permission, I'll read the consent agenda item for the record.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Consent agenda item 8A. Approve funding levels for the use of fiscal year 2022 CDBG and home grant funds as recommended. Consent agenda item B. Revise the February 23, 2021 approval to purchase 20 Axon Body cameras, along with data license for cameras and pre-existing cameras in the inventory from Axon Enterprises Incorporated, and approve the five-year contract. The first-year payment is $25,700, or $270.41, with four subsequent payments of $57,816, resulting in a five-year total of $256,534.41. Authorize the mayor to execute the agreement upon final approval by the city attorney and purchasing contracts administrator. The proposal is provided in your agenda. Consent agenda item 8C. Approve the use of Sourcewell Cooperative NJPA purchasing contract to upgrade the Fleet Fuel Master software in the amount of $16,271.1 to Guardian Fueling Technologies, and authorize the mayor to execute the proposed subject to the resolution and agreement and terms and condition by the city manager, city attorney, and approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8D. Accept a portion of Willow Creek Boulevard Track R4 as a public street.
Thank you, counsel. Anything you want to comment on that right now?
And on that correction, just so you know, Planning and Zoning did hear that item on March 17, 2021, voted 7-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, call cards?
One card. It's Stan Johnston.
Four cards. Okay. Stan Johnston, let's start with, if I can go one card to go 8A. That's an approval. 8B is approval with conditions that I'll go over with you. 8C is approval with conditions, I'll go over that with you. And 8D, I'm opposed to that. 8D is a... I went ahead and read the agenda packet on that, and I'm a little bit surprised. It's a, I didn't, I don't see any inspection of the improvements. I don't see any, in other words, this is a private right-of-way and a private street that's being converted to a public street. I see no inspections. I see no approval by the Public Works Department to accept the street. I see no inspection that shows, you know, the sidewalks looked all cracked up. It's, you know, whenever it was finally... And I want you to understand is that, practically speaking, is that private streets, although they might be designed as the same as public streets, they're not inspected the same. For example, in Brevard County, there's very big difference. I mean, if you've got a private street, you can, they can have somebody else to hire them to do their own inspections. The public is, the city of Tysil has very little responsibility in the, say, in the inspection of private streets. So we are converting a private street into a public street, and I see no review by Public Works. So I cannot, in any way, I can't approve this. And not only that, is when I look on the aerial, I don't see a street. I see, looks like just a cleared area for those and cleared area for the, pretty much the rest of Verona. So I'm opposed to that. Let's go to the next ones. These approved with conditions.
What'd you say, B?
8B and 8C. These both are money items. And it appears to me, if you've got, so let's say $25,000 or, no, $256,000 for four-year payments for these Axon Body cameras and so forth, and licenses and so forth. $256,000. And then for the other one, the Fuel Master software upgrade, over $16,000 for that. You would think that the city could use some money to hire a professional engineer. Because I send you, I send you, for example, all this thing about the fraud here. Thing about the, what I just showed you on PNZ, I mean, the petitions and requests, I showed you that, that, my goodness, sewage went straight into the river. Got all these witnesses and so forth, police officers and all kinds of... And then I got this sewage spray, which I say is not good for the health, safety, and welfare of the people. Sewage sprayed, you know, the fountains going on. We have fountain, no, we have a pond. Around the pond, we got all these signs that says it might be contaminated. Of course, if our tests come back, it's contaminated. So what we have is we have these fountains. And the fountains spray up the water, and when, depending on the wind, you get, you get wetted by the fountain or aerosol spray, whatever. And of course, that was reported. It was reported by Watch, what is it? Fight for Zero, of all kinds of vomiting, diarrhea, nausea and stuff. But the city went ahead and, we went ahead and continued to have this spray going all the time. And I told you about it. And in other words, why don't we have a professional engineer? You're spending, I mean, you're spending this money. And I don't understand why you wouldn't, the city wouldn't spend a little bit of money to have a professional engineer to look into these issues? Because you've got the money. And the only reason I can think of that you're not spending it is because it's going to show that you're guilty of all kinds of violations of laws and dishonesty and hiding, hiding things. So that's the main reasons. So I want to, I want you to go ahead and approve these, these items 8B and 8C. But I want you to approve them with the understanding it's with the condition that you're going to wisely use your money and not foolishly spend it. And wisely use it is that you need to confirm what the city is doing on these violations that I've come to forward with you. And you need to look into them. Because right now, the only one people you're talking to is your city manager, your city attorney, and a football coach. I don't tell Mr. Diesel how to do football. He shouldn't be telling me how to do engineering. The same with your attorney. I don't tell him how to do attorney work, and he shouldn't tell me how to do engineering work. I'm a professional engineer for, my goodness, 44 years? Be 45 soon. And I've been not just, I've been active and a professional land surveyor and all these other things. So, so I, there's, right now, and I'm talking about with conditions, is that there's not one council member that I can call on the phone and talk about these things. And of course, I can't talk to city manager, he won't talk to me. There's not one council member that will return my emails, phone calls, and so forth. And as you all know, I'm going to send a correspondence to our civic leaders, our church leaders and so forth, saying, what is going on? I've got all these credentials and so forth. And as far as I can see, is where you're spending your money is not where your heart is, because you should be serving the public. And as my license says, is protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. But, so anyhow, these items are, 8B and 8C are good. And I would suggest that you look further into 8D about that, because I don't see a road. And so what can happen is what the same thing happened, a similar thing happened in Brevard County, Fond Lake. They went ahead and approved a city, the county approved a plant. And the roads weren't put in, the private roads weren't put in. So they kept it from the public, because after they did it is that the owner said, well, you know, well, it's whatever. So the city, the county had to pay for paving the roads because they accepted the plant. And it wasn't really built. There's almost no difference here. I don't see that you've got, maybe you got a road there, but I don't see it. Didn't see it on the aerial. And they don't have an inspection by Public Works to accept it. I don't know what you're doing. But it looks like to me, if there is no road there, do you know who's going to pay for it? It's the public. It's the public. Our taxpayers, not the developer. So I want you, I'd like you to look into that. If you can't disapprove it, at least table it until you find out. And also on these other items, 8B and 8C, is that, use that money a little bit and hire a professional engineer. And what I'm saying is, what he needs to do is you need to have it saying is that Stan Johnston is wrong on this such and such. Or you don't even have to mention my name. Say, it's okay, there is no problem with the stormwater system with the floodways being choked with vegetation. Sign and seal it. And then I'll take it and I'll send it to the Board of Professional Engineers and cite him. That's what I do. That's just one of many, one of many. Same thing with your Verone's flood zones. He'll say, oh, these flood zones are okay. I know they're okay. I've checked with it. Sign and seal it, and I'll just send it, send it right to the board. Otherwise than that, he just talks, he just, he just talks. So I don't know if I can have another minute after this. It looks like I'm down to about 30 seconds. Just about done. But I really appreciate you.
Oh, it's over? Yes, and you stayed on task for 10 minutes. Oh, my God. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Was that fun?
He was still on topic, though. Thanks, Stan. Now we move to, no, no, don't get on me. I know we're done. I need a motion to approve the...
I'm reading. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8D.
Second.
Oh. I have a motion. It's Member Stokel with a second.
She is here.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City manager, ordinance?
We're on to 10A, item 10A, which is ordinance number 8, 2021, rezoning application number 1-2021. Home Depot out partial at Windover Trail and city attorney.
Ordinance number 8, 2021. An ordinance of the city of Tysil, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993. By amending zoning map, made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present community commercial CC zoning district with the regional commercial RC zoning district for a portion of property approximately .997 acres in size, having partial ID number 223529AV49, located on the south side of Columbia Boulevard and on the west side of Windover Trail, providing for an effective date.
On March 17, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request and recommended approval with the condition that the applicant hold a community engagement meeting before the city council meeting on April 13, 2021. It passed 7-0. This is your first reading of ordinance number 8, 2021. The second reading and public hearing will be conducted by city council on April 13 at 6:30. Ms. Bisaka?
Ms. Bisaka, you have anything you want to give us on that?
The only information I wanted to provide you is that the public meeting with the, the public engagement meeting is scheduled for March 29, so it will be before the next time this is heard by council.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Yes.
Stan Johnston, 860 points.
Oh, Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Yes, it's good. Here's what's going on, is that I want to agree with this special, there's special conditions that are, that are in this particular application. And so I put, I was opposed to it, but I'm not really opposed to it. I'm just thinking, you got to have these special conditions looked at by the community, as is voted on by PNC. So I think that's important that you have that, and it's properly...
So I think that's important, that you have that and it's properly advertised, so that people who are affected will be notified and participate. That's all, thank you. No time, no extra time.
Thank you. Uh, that's the first reading, no action necessary. City Manager, please introduce old business.
Onto, onto new business, we have no old business. Item twelve A is the final plat of Verona subdivision, phase one replat. Verona Phase One is a seventy-nine lot subdivision located west of the intersection of Willow Creek Boulevard and Grissom Parkway. On February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, city council approved the original Verona plat, first or final plat, and contained several common area tracks, specifically tracks I, J, K and V. Small-scale amendment was approved by city council on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, which designated several irregularly shaped areas totaling four point five acres from conservation future land use and OR zoning to medium-density residential future land use and R one C zoning. That approval also allowed the property owner to apply for an amendment to the existing plat by converting tracks I, J, K and V from common areas to eighteen additional single-family residential lots. On December eighth, twenty twenty, city council approved the replat and the sketch plat for Verona Phase One. The approval and subsequent recording of the replat of the original final plat would solidify converting portions of track I, J, K and V from common areas to single-family home residential lots. The requested plat has been reviewed for compliance with all applicable regulations and staff recommends approval. Ms. Bisaka is available to answer questions on this final plat.
Ms. Bisaka.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, council, any questions? Uh, applicant?
Rodney Honeycutt.
Good evening.
Oh, Rodney.
Finally get here.
That's right.
So, um...
So you're Rodney Honeycutt?
Rodney Honeycutt, thirty-seven hundred South Washington Avenue. So really, I'm just here to answer any questions, too, also.
Counsel? No, I think that we've pretty much been through this one, so I feel pretty good about it. Call the cards, please.
Last card, Stan Johnston.
Uh, Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, that avenue. And I'm questioning this final plat approval, and I expect something, it's been bonding of approvals and so forth. I look at the aerial of it and it's, it's been cleared and so forth, I don't see any streets put in yet. But I'm, I'm requesting that you table it, or maybe Mr. Honeycutt can say something about my aerial, my looking at the aerial, so it shows that not only that is there no street in this R four, call, let's see, what is it called? Twenty-five, thirty-five, ten, fifty, asterisk, R point four, that, that, that I see no road there. I looked, it, it said, sale not applicable, and said market value ten dollars for that particular one on, on the Fraser site. So, uh, I think that you could, in other words, if you have problems, if you approve this, maybe you could go back to, and, and you find out that there's, there's no road there, you could, you could do rule thirteen and revoke that eight D, which is except, you know, a portion of Willow Creek Boulevard right away, tract R four. So I'm going to suggest to you that, that you may have an out, even by next meeting, should you find out that the street is not paved. But still, what I do not see in your final, in your, uh, what do you call it, in your agenda package, I see nothing from Public Works accepting this, this private street to be a public street. That is, it's not right. You can't go around accepting public streets with, I mean, accept a private street for public use without having Public Works look at it. It's just not done, it's not supposed to be done. I mean, if, 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 if planning has done that, they've gone out of their bounds. It's got to be looked at by Public Works. So you can get in trouble, or if you, if, if there is not a street there, or even if you haven't had Public Works examine it, you're in trouble. So I'm going to let you go ahead and, and do what you want to do, but you've been warned. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Rodney, can you come up just a second, real quick, just a minute? Can you give us a quick update on where you're at with that and what the timeframe is and completion dates and that sort of thing?
Um...
Possible?
It's, it's not a private street, they're public streets. The, the roads were approved several months ago, they're completely installed and everything.
I wasn't even worried about that, I was just looking for you. Kind of give me a happy story of, we're here, we're going to do this, and we're almost...
And so, yeah, and it's a very successful subdivision.
Yeah, it looks very nice, uh, I get to go buy it sometimes and I'm kind of excited. When do you think that that will be ready to, ready to roll?
Uh, phase one, uh, which is what's out there now, is rolling.
And then phase two?
And phase two, uh, we hope to get the sketch plat to you here in a few more weeks.
I would say it's exciting to drive by and see, and it just adds so much out there, and I think it's going to add more for being there.
Yeah, I think so.
So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I could, excuse me, there are actually homes out there that are waiting for this plat to be approved for that, them to get their CO in the next week or so. So they, um, they are moving right along. In addition to that, the road that Mr. Johnston keeps referring to was built per the city, and according to city specifications, there is no letter from Public Works, because community development does that review. All existing water force mains and reclaimed water utilities were pressure tested. I think the issue is the aerials haven't caught up.
That's what I thought, too.
In addition to that, um, there is a Mylar which has been reviewed, approved, signed, and the clerk has that, and that's a state requirement, so I want to confirm that on the record.
Very good, thank you. All right, counsel, can we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve final plat of Verona subdivision phase one.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Passes unanimously?
Mr. Mayor, I, I gotta say something about this subdivision. I, I went out there and looked at it, and it's one of the most beautiful places that you, I didn't know we had it in Titusville, to tell you the truth. So if any of the council members haven't been out there, I think they should take a ride out there, see what we're getting, because it's, it's a class act, for sure.
I go by that way, down Grissom Off and then pull in and a lot going on. That's why I kind of wanted to hear you, pump it up. All right, uh, City Manager, we move on to B.
I, I don't think you voted.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I...
Yeah.
It's ten twenty, it's ten twenty-eight.
I'm older than you.
I apologize, I, I guess I zoned out, I didn't hear you guys vote.
All right, we have a roll call vote, we are now moving on to B.
Yes, sir. Twelve B, with great excitement, we're recommending that city council approve the budget and staff efforts for coordinating the twenty twenty-one Red White and Boom festivals and authorize city manager to put in place contracting instruments necessary. City staff is partnering with Brevard County Park and Rec and the Chamber of Commerce and local civic groups to hold this year's event at Chain of Lakes. City went out for bids in the twenty twenty display, receiving only one bid from Starfire Three Rivers Celebration. Due to the pandemic, the city was forced to cancel that event in twenty twenty. The contract has been carried over for this year in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. This event is a family-oriented community celebration with free admission for all. Its estimated twenty-seven thousand cost will, of this event, is funded primarily from our annual fundraising drive, which commences in March and runs through the end of June. This fundraising includes outreach to local businesses. Unlike previous years, citizens will not be solicited for fundraising of this event. The change of venue comes because the parking issues in Sandpoint Park with the new construction across from the launch site. Other changes will include increased security due to larger area and access to the launch site, several additional construction lights and safety before and after the event, signs around the park warning of possible COVID exposure, and finally, Max DJ Supply will be replacing a live band this year to avoid crowds gathering at the stage. He has previous, he has in previous years supplied us with a stage, speaker and other entertainment equipment. Additionally, has added COVID nineteen protective measures. There will be no vendors at this year's celebration, prevent long lines intending, of attendees standing in close proximity, get food.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And as Mayor Johnson would say, counsel, what's your pleasure? I see no lights yet, and I'll tell you what I think if you're not careful.
I think we ought to approve it.
Vice Mayor Nelson says she thinks we ought to approve it, are there any other comments?
Well, I, I do have a comment, I'm a little sad that we're, we're going to have it, but there's no...
We have one card.
We're just, we're just cutting it right now. We're going to talk first, then we'll...
I mean, he's the mayor, he can tell us what to do, right?
Go. Is this what I do? I go, I go, staff, council, cards, council.
That's right. We're getting a little honorary here, ten thirty. Um, I, I, I like the idea of us having it since we didn't have last year, but I kind of feel bad that it, it really won't be any gathering because of COVID, no live band, no, nothing. But you will have the red, white and boom, so I, I am concerned about everybody going out to the Chain of Lakes and basically one way in and one way out, and so it's going to be a lot of traffic, for sure, so that's, that's not only concerning.
And, and just to reiterate, and I think we've already said this, there's not going to be any, like, speaking or just going to be fireworks.
We're just going to run a DJ and hopefully families can gather together and separate themselves and shoot off some fireworks.
And if I'm not mistaken, in our discussion, you said these fireworks actually go a little higher.
There'll be a better view of these fireworks, yes?
Yeah, because I'd be honest with you, I, I'm agreeing with Member Jordan here, it's a tough in and out, and I'm not patient like I used to be, so I'll press it on US one. But anyway, uh, call the cards, please.
Dan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. Uh, I apologize first of all about this, I, I expect, oh, Peck, he's not here, but apparently there was my aerial I was looking at was, was old, because houses are built out there now, and that I was looking at. But twelve B, Red, White and Boom, why am I, I'd be questionable about this issue? Because it's, it's twenty-two thousand dollars. If you can spend twenty-two thousand dollars on Red, White and Boom, you can spend twenty-two thousand dollars on this case of fraud, despite hiring, and the case of, of, of the sewage going in there, get a professional engineer to, to look into it and report on it. And like I said, so, so that's it, that's it, I'm, I'm going to let you go. But you've got the money, spend it, because, you know, as I know, I'm sending it to the governor, my, my attorney and I, about what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Counsel, we've got a motion? No, we just talked. She said she wanted to do it, and then we got some more to kind of put, and so we...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve twelve B, Red, White and Boom, twenty twenty-one event.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second from Vice Mayor, roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City Manager, have a question. Uh, we're past ten thirty, we need to...
I was just going to say that, yeah, you'll have to take a vote to continue.
Okay, very good.
We have three items left.
Okay, we move forward, go.
You'll need to take a vote, sir.
Well, okay, so you're saying we need to do that? Oh, I thought you were saying we're close enough not to worry about it. Uh, ten forty-five. I have a motion and a second, although in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, go forward, sir.
Next item is petitions and requests.
And we have, and you guys want to talk? Good experience. Remind me real quick, not to go long, I promise, what's your first name again? They were at that Saturday event, and, and got to talk to them and talk to them afterwards, and I have no idea why you came and sat through all this today. But I enjoy you guys being here, and, and I go back to the Saturday comments you made, which, you know, I, I appreciate it, but thank you for being here and glad to see you again. Thank you, guys. Okay, no petitions or requests.
Yes, sir, on to item fourteen A, which is the mayor's report.
Uh, mayor's report is recorded, counsel, anything you need to report?
I have...
Hold on, let me go, Vice Mayor Nelson?
I do have one thing I want to report. I got a call about two weeks ago to come over to the River View Pilot Club, and I want to say I am seriously impressed by our community, by its generosity, how they care about other people. So the people at the pilot club, specifically Betty Green and Pat Shivers, decided that they were going to raise money so that all the kids of the Boys and Girls Club had a new pair of shoes.
Wow.
And they handed me the money, and I have to say, that was the shortest speech I ever made, because I had tears in my eyes. I really did.
That's very...
And then it got better. We had a gentleman that was the president of one of the banks here, a guy named Keith Sigmund, know him, and his wife, Pat, and they came up and said, we're giving you five thousand dollars, buy those kids clothes. So, and then I called Parrish and I said, I need money for a parking lot, and Mr. McCarterian said, sure.
On the roll.
So we're on a roll, we're on a roll, and, but I'm just like, you know, how great of a community we have.
You're right, you've said that to me, that's absolutely right.
So a couple times this last week, I, I was sniffling.
And sometimes we need that after what we deal with.
Yeah.
That's awesome, can't wait for the ultimate celebration.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, you good?
I'm good.
Sounds awesome, thank you so much for sharing that. Member Robinson?
Yes, I just wanted to know, I, I attended a TPO meeting, and I was, and they were giving out awards, my, uh, whole heart was not there on that, that meeting, and they were giving out awards to all the cities and the people throughout the county, but nothing for Titusville. I didn't understand that. Titusville not doing nothing, exciting, and give, I don't know what the criteria, I don't know what the criteria is. What was it, do you know, Ron?
I was...
But you've been...
I mean, you should know.
You've been... You should be able to tell me what all of those awards are for. Oh, okay.
You should be...
But anyway.
And Member Robinson, just to put your...
It was some award being given out about TPO and, uh, Cocoa, people from Cocoa, it was, uh, people, uh...
Yes, sir.
A regular citizen was doing it.
Yeah, just so, we, we get the awards periodically, so it's, it's because, remember, Jordan was absent, he didn't get the award this year, so, um, not to single them out or anything, but, no, we, we have, they kind of rotate them around.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know, because, you know, you know, when you're sitting there, you from Titusville, and...
No awards, he's not going.
Hey, but, question for Sarah. Uh, Sarah, I know that, um, I'm your alternate for the League of Cities, and have you been intending or doing anything that I'm, I should be, I'll be aware of it?
Yeah, so we've been still meeting, um, virtually, we started transitioning to do like half virtual, half in person, um, but no, we've just been talking about house session, what's going on in Tallahassee, which is a lot right now. Um, so I'll keep you guys posted, but a lot with the short-term rentals, um, we're still watching the, being able to regulate smoking in the public parks.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
No, that was, that's me.
Do you want to talk at all about the tour we did? Or no, downtown? No, not really, but I'll go. Uh, real quick, um, uh, Member Jordan and I did a tour of, of, what's that called again? The, the project? Blunt.
Blunt, Blunt Now.
And I will, I, I, first of all, it was tremendous memories going through the old bank and the stairway, I forgot about that, and, uh, we had our old interact picture taken there, for one thing. Anyway, just the progress is amazing, and the fact that they're taking a pause to decide if they want a restaurant or a food court in there as their main event, they've got a company who's doing a, a study, so instead of just jumping in there, and then the apartments upstairs, I mean, the way they, you know, turn those into apartments, and I think that that really has to be a, a key to the success down there. and I think that that really has to be a, a key to the success down there. We've got to get people living down there. I will just say that I got a chance to talk to, if you didn't see it, it's online, I got a chance to talk to, uh, Steve Wilson with, um, Space Coast Daily, and, um, I thought I was able to sell a lot of the stuff, including our trip down there, um, tomorrow morning, and other things happening quickly. I just got the email yesterday, but tomorrow morning at seven thirty, anybody want to come with me, uh, Winn-Dixie's having a grand opening on Singleton, City Manager, and I think it's a re-grand opening, because I don't think there's a new Winn-Dixie down there. Then after that, we meet with some home builders at nine o'clock, and then ten o'clock I go to a homeless coalition, uh, with Trey Gordon and his group, uh, downtown at, uh, Harry Timore. So a lot of things happening, you know, in my case, I'm out a lot, but it's not anything, you know, necessarily big and grand. So, uh, with that, as far as nothing else, City Manager?
Yes, sir. One action item for counsel tonight is the authorization to conduct, uh, mosquito aerial spraying. Statute is a letter dated, uh, March fifth, twenty twenty-one from the Director of Brevard County Mesquite Control Department requesting, I'm really tired, requesting to renew authorization to conduct its aerial spraying program in Titusville from May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is a routine authorization and is requested on a biannual basis and covers subsequent two-year period. Quest, uh, counsel authorize the mayor to sign the letter, and we'll launch it off.
Do I need public comment on that? Is there a card? All right, I have a motion and a second. Ah, okay. All right.
Uh, aerial bombardment from helicopters and whatever there is. Just had a neighbor, uh, and now he died. He died from, uh, what is it that? He was in, he was in Vietnam, and, uh, he got the Agent Orange. Took him fifty years to kill him, though. By golly. Got another friend, uh, same thing, uh, took him about fifty years to kill him. Well, maybe forty-eight. And, uh, right now is we're doing aerial spraying through, um, this, uh, whatever chemicals they might be. But, uh, what you understand is, is that, uh, there's, there's effects going on. The, the honeybees are in big trouble. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, insects that are in trouble, and, and these are not specific. Some of these, uh, sprays are not specific. They kill just about everything. And, uh, they say they're not toxic to humans, and that's exactly what they said about Agent Orange. They told the military people, "It's not toxic, it's not toxic," but it does. It killed them. It took fifty years to kill them, but it killed them, and it was horrible death. So we've got, um, uh, toxins that are, that are being sprayed, and, and I think that, that, uh, I don't, I, I'm, I'm sure there's maybe a way to find out what these toxins are, but I've heard that it's difficult to find out. But here we are, we, we continue to test for nitrogen and phosphorus in our water, but we don't do toxic chemicals. And I think that's sad, because that's where, uh, our pollution came in. When we look on the documentaries and where, where, uh, people in West Virginia were polluted with all these surfactants and making Teflon and so forth, and, and just on and on and on and on, it goes on. Uh, I want you to remember is that one time, Dan Diesel, he's, he weighs, he probably weighs almost over two hundred pounds now, but at one time, he weighed less than a gram. And his mother was taking the, all these things, and they were, they were, the concentration was much higher because he was a little tiny then. But now, so, so, um, we apparently, it seems like we don't recognize this. I mean, uh, for, for, you know, we have children's aspirins and things like that, but we don't have anything for people, little tiny people. But yet, we expose them the same kind of stuff, just like when somebody breathes fumes from an automobile or breathes fumes or something like that. Toxins that come into a little baby in the womb is far more toxic than it is to the human, to the adult. That's why we have things like, uh, these, uh, deformed children and so forth continue being happening in Vietnam and elsewhere because of Agent Orange. And, uh, my understanding is this, uh, some of this stuff has this, uh, same compound that Agent Orange has in it that we're being sprayed with. So, uh, TEC, I think it should be sent this. Thank you. I'm opposed.
Thank you very much. Stan? I appreciate you putting me right over two hundred pounds, brother.